Ladies and gentlemen, the time is 6 o'clock and the date is June 7th of 2022. And we are convening our open city council meeting briefing and working session. Just a couple of notes on housekeeping. Mr. Vera Cruz, who is the chaplain for the Dallas Fire Department, is occupied in those duties tonight and will not be present. And Mr. Contreras is not feeling quite 100%. He is participating with us and will have the ability to participate and vote by video conference. Now, Mr. Contreras, we do need your video on, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm going to have to leave for one second to get back to my settings. Apologize for that. You can continue.
All right. Thank you very much. So the first thing on our work session, briefing session, is to discuss the agenda items, consent items. Turn that over to our city manager, Mr. Farrow Benavides. Farrow Benavides, please. Consent items.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Quite a few items are consent items this time. Item 4A, consider the minutes for the May 10, 2022, City Council Special Meeting, the May 17, 2022, City Council Regular Meeting, and the May 26, 2022, City Council Special. Item 4B, consider resolution authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Rockland County Ford LLC through buy board contract number 601-19 to approve the procurement of eight Ford SUVs in the total expenditure of $252,385. This is an item for procurement for seven Fords to replace current vehicles being used by police and our assistant city manager, plus an additional Ford SUV for the new fire inspector position approved in the FY '22 budget. The vehicles to be replaced have reached the end of their useful lives. There's a budget shortfall in where we are. However, we will utilize other funds to cover the costs that are not available. The city is using buy board cooperative purchasing and vendor is Rockland County Ford located in Rockdale, Texas.
Question?
Yes.
So the, what we estimated when we built the budget was $242,000. It's $252,000 now. Is that part of the, that whole supply chain deal that the price went up? It looks like violence.
Can you answer that?
I didn't hear the question.
Why did the price go up? Why is the price more than we thought it would be?
Because over the past year, prices have gone up on just about everything.
So yes, the answer is the prices, the price of vehicles have gone up and there's also a supply and demand. And so they're able to ask more because there's a shortage and we've had a long delay in getting vehicles and have been waiting and for quite a while to even find vehicles that are available. So yes.
So the, so the city finances have definitely impacted by this inflationary grip that the nation finds itself in.
Yes, sir.
No, I think when it comes to automobiles as well, there's a shortfall with the computer chips that are coming from overseas. That's been a shortfall for over a year now. So the automobile dealerships don't have vehicles because of the shortfall in the computer chips. And in fact, when they get them now, it's supply and demand. Capitalism at its finest. Short supply, high demand, prices go up.
So my question for Mr. Lowe is, what was the standard time that a vehicle would take for turnaround and what's the standard time now?
Previously, depending on the vehicle, average eight to 12 weeks. Now you're looking, as they've kind of ramped up a little bit, to try to get them out more quickly, 20 to 30 from the time of order. And that's, that's just now.
Right. And these are specially equipped vehicles. These are the ones you can go to a dealership and just buy off the lot. These are not only purchased, then they have to be outfitted, equipped with all the special gear as well.
When, when we purchase the vehicle, the outfitter will also purchase the equipment at that same time. So hopefully they both arrive close to the same time so they can be outfitted and, and ready for us. A good time.
Any other questions on this item? Thank you.
Item 4C is consider a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Texas Department of Transportation Selective Traffic Enforcement program in the amount of $12,000 utilized to fund high visibility speed deterrence control during operations slowdown. The staff grant will provide a total reimbursement for salary cost of up to 240 hours or $12,000 of additional enforcement using existing personnel on an overtime basis. The goal is to reduce the number of persons killed or injured in collision involving alcohol speed and other red light violations through increased traffic enforcement.
I'd like to comment on this, just as a suggestion to city managers, that we, city council members frequently receive comments from our citizens about speeding down Daniel Dale, speeding down Weetland, red light running that continues. This is a very, very special grant that could assist us in, in helping to slow down traffic. And so I think it might be possible to give some publicity to this through our social media if you want to consider that.
Item 4D, consider a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 2022 procurement of police ammunition from GT distributors in Austin, Texas through buy board contract number 603-20 for the contractually discounted price in the amount not to exceed $128,000. In FY 2021, the police department was able to obtain their ammunition ordered where it was not, wasn't able to due to the manufacturer's delay, shipping issues, and COVID-19. And I think many of you have seen on TV there has been a bullet shortage. FY '21, '22 orders a total over $50,000. This item needed to be presented to the city council for approval. The department trains warrant personnel monthly and firearms. All right. 4E, consider resolution authorizing the final contract renewal with Core and Main LP with an estimated expenditure amount of $250,000. This agreement will provide for the purchase of water and wastewater replacement parts and material through April 17, 2023 in the amount of $250,000. Purchases will include water system pressure monitoring fire hydrants, which are significantly more expensive than standard fire hydrants. The water system pressure monitoring technology will not affect or impede the emergency operations of our fire hydrant in any manner. The city is using a cooperative purchase agreement once again with the city of Grapevine for the procurement action. This is the fourth and final renewal of the contract agreement between the city of Grapevine and Core Main. Yes.
So do we buy these items as needed or do we maintain a supply to some extent?
I believe and I'll ask.
We, we do have supply that we keep in-house and this is just to continue to be able to purchase items so that we have everything ready to go when we need it.
There are times when we, we don't have it and what, one of the main things, especially when it comes to water, wastewater, any type of equipment, because there is, as with other construction projects, a back order, we do try to get when we can, what we can. But generally, there's not a large quantity out there.
That word again, back order.
Right. And so again, Mr. Brad, what's the normal turnaround time and what is it now?
Well, I've seen stuff take as much as three months to get. So brass is a hot item right now. Brass is hard to find and I'm sure that's affecting the ammunition shortage, but I've seen three month delay on deliveries.
Okay. So the next one I'm going to read and the mayor has some comments on this one is consider resolution suspending the June 17, 2022 effective date of Encore Electric Delivery Company's request rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates approving cooperative with the steering committee of cities served by Encore to hire legal and consulting services and to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals findings that the meeting at which the resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel for the steering committee. And under, can you add in a portion of it?
Understanding for new council members and citizens as well, this is the standard operating procedure. The request coming to us from Encore to increase the rates and for us to respond accordingly and say, no, we're not going to agree to that. This is something that happens almost every time that, this is a, that happens every time that Encore comes and seeks a rate increase. Understanding that Encore as an electricity provider for the North Texas area cannot charge the city of Duncanville, the city of Cedar Hill, the city of Dallas, the city of Hutchins, any different rates. Everybody has to have the same rate. So what we are seeing as presented to us by Encore is being presented to all the cities that Encore serves in North Texas at the same time. So this suspension, as we're asking for this, for a 90 day suspension is an SOP for us as a city to examine this, for Encore as well to seek legal advice and counsel, and for the city to seek advice and counsel in terms of how we may proceed on this. And also understanding that Encore cannot do this individually, they have to go through the Public Utilities Commission of Texas. So it's a, it's a very high level piece of information. What we do is respond and saying, no, you're not going to increase those rates on us. And here's a 90 day suspension of that, of that request. So that's basically where we're at. Mr. Harvey.
And so, Mayor, if I can piggyback on what you just said, I ran into one Kenny Govan at another city and he was coming, he was going to that city to pick up a copy of the resolution similar to this one. So yes, it is all the cities that they service. And he mentioned to me, would we please, please, please pass it as?
The suspension?
Yes.
Yes. So it's, it's kind of like a, we're voting yes on a no, but it's a good thing to vote the no, so vote the yes on the no, so we suspend.
I'm done with questions.
So council all clear on, on what we're needing to do? As I said, Encore is actually requesting the suspension themselves. It's up to us as a council to proceed to that and approving the suspension by saying, no, suspension.
And there are 169 cities who are part of this and so Mr. Govan is trying to work his way around to each of them, but it's definitely a lot of work to get to them all at the same time, so.
Thank you.
Item 4G, this is consider a resolution approving an offer of a hotel occupancy tax grant for the FY '22, '23 budget in the amount of $85,000 to Hoop Fest Basketball Organization for the 14th Annual Thanksgiving Hoop Fest to directly enhance and promote tourism and the hotel industry condition upon approval in the FY '22, '23 budget. We also have both Coach Peavy here and Mr. Glenn.
Glenn.
Mr. Glenn.
Smith.
Mr. Glenn Smith, who have been coordinating Hoop Fest in our city. Hoop Fest was created in 2017 as a means to use the game of basketball as a resource to reach youth and align them with mentors to help them reach their goals. Hoop Fest is requesting $85,000 from the 14th Annual Thanksgiving Hoop Fest to be held on November 25th and 26, 2000 at the Sandro Meadow Arena. Over 7,500 people are expected to attend the event. Approximately 5,000 attendings will be from other cities and car countries. 2,000 people will be using Duncanville Hotels, 300 rooms rented for the event at the Hilton Garden and Hampton Inn in La Quinta. The $85,000 will go toward room board for the team's hospitality costs, promotion, marketing of the event, officials, facility rooms, website maintenance, graphics, ground transportation, printing. And the Hoop Fest organization is not receiving the grant or financial support from any other government entity.
And it's worth mentioning, as read in our package, this is normally a slow time for our hotels. So scheduling the Hoop Fest during a slow time actually is an adjunct in terms of bringing additional income to the city, which normally would not be there. Those two are advantages, a city to grant this request and look at it for that $85,000 because of the heads and beds, as it's called, Hotel Hot Funds, heads and beds, the more we can do by bringing in, what, 7,500 people from all around the country and internationally for coaches, NBA coaches coming in to look at, or coaches, I guess, managers coming in to take a look at it. It's a great advantage to our city. So thank you, Mr. Smith. Coach Peavy, do you have anything? I mean, eye on the ground, hands on this thing, you see how it works.
Um, we, we have played in everything that Glenn has asked us to play in, starting with the Thanksgiving Hoop Fest. Glenn also runs the Hoop Fest series around the country and that's why we have become the premier high school basketball program in the country because of the platform that Glenn has provided for us and other high schools, of course, but he is by far the best in the business at what he does. And for us to have this in Duncanville is just very special.
Mr. Smith, do you have any comment?
I appreciate you guys' time and I hope I can see everyone out there this, this Thanksgiving and so you guys can see some really good basketball and see some of the future NBA players. I'm not sure if you guys have ever been, just for example, in 2019, you had eight guys play in the event that was right here in Duncanville that went on to get drafted in the NBA first round, including the number one pick, Cade Cunningham, the number two pick, Jalen Green. So I think it's really a special opportunity and I'm looking forward to shining some additional light on the city of champions.
And for Coach Peavy to attribute the standing of the number one team in the nation, maybe people haven't heard that yet, but Duncanville Boys Basketball Team was recognized by Max Rapp as the number one team in the entirety of the United States. And so for Coach Peavy to attribute that accolade to his participation in Hoop Fest.
I can tell you, that does not happen if, if we don't play in his events. I mean, we got to play against the best teams in the country to be considered the best team in the country and Glenn, Glenn provided that for us.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from council?
No, just, just very excited that you all have chosen Duncanville to, to put on an event such as this and we're very grateful and anything more we can do, just let us know.
Thank you so much.
But not more than $85,000.
Mayor, I want to say that the good news in this is that some of this software that you've seen and technology you've seen that Mr. Garcia and Clay have presented to us allow us an opportunity to not only track where people come, where they go, and we're looking at providing in this opportunity some information on our restaurants and all the places that they can go within the city. So we're really making this a true city of Duncanville event where we're going to welcome them and, and also try to get them spending money, not only sleeping, but eating and spending time in our city. And so, thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Item 4H, consider resolution approving this supplemental of FY '22 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG project activity application for the CDVG funds from Dallas, Dallas County. Every two years, Duncanville's Community Development Block Grant Program is funded through Dallas County by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This year, the city will receive $199,192 for eligible projects located in the CDVG designated census tract. Tracts qualify when at least 51% of the population makes less than the median household income based on family size. For example, four people household would make less than $70,375 annually. 13 of Duncanville's 31 census tract and nearly 47% of the residents qualify as the low to moderate income. Projects either eliminate blight, eliminate community threatening conditions, or principally benefit low to moderate income people. Staff is requesting council approval to submit the application for two projects to Dallas County. The first is our Neighborhood Services Officer dedicated to low to moderate income areas for approximately $112,000 over the next two years. This is a project that the city has received CDVG funds in 2001 and this is our formerly, as we call it, our code votes who actually work in those areas. The second application would use the remaining balance of the approximately $87,000 to fund sidewalk improvements along Oriole Boulevard from East Camp Wisdom Road to East Ferramatto Drive. This will provide a safe route to for pedestrians in the north Ferramatto addition to access grocery and retail stores, restaurants, and other businesses along Camp Wisdom. The CDVG funds would pay for a portion of the projects. And that concludes the items on our consent agenda.
Thank you for that. Just one item of housekeeping when it comes to the vote, we come into this open city council on this. Mr. Contreras, I see that you are now on video.
Sir.
When, when it comes time for a vote at this in open city council, we're going to ask for a vote, a voice vote from you as well as a signal with your hand just to make sure everything comes across clearly.
Sir.
And that would count for all the votes that are taken while you're on video while we're in city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 2A, discuss the annual city council calendars. City Secretary Downs, staff.
All right. On June 13th, we have a scholars luncheon. If you haven't RSVP'd or if you do not want to attend, please email me and let me know. I'll reach out with y'all tomorrow. On June 14th, yes, sir.
Singular. They only invited one person to that.
We have tables and we can get seats for other councils. Yes. So Mr. Councilmember Harvey will be there, but I know Councilmember Vera Cruz will be too. And we can purchase single seats, we just can't purchase a table.
Okay. What came out was they only wanted one single representative from the city and I can't be president, Mayor, but Tim Harvey's the representative.
I did confirm that with Miss Amanda. Okay. On June 14th at 6:00 PM, I would like to have a special meeting with y'all to discuss the boards and commissions. I would like to bring all the ordinances to y'all and we can try to have a little bit consistency and discuss every board if you want to reduce numbers, if you want, you know, we want to discuss all that. I don't want to get more into that. June 18th is Juneteenth Celebration. It's going to be in Lancaster and thank you to everyone who is attending and has RSVP'd with me. City offices are closed on Monday, June 20th. We have a city council meeting on the 21st. Also, on the 18th is Election Day to vote for our mayor, mayor runoff. So the canvassing period for that is June 21st through the 30th. So I may be calling a special meeting on the 27th. If I can get it on the 27th, that's going to be ideal because we have a budget overview meeting at that time. If not, I will be calling a special meeting on June 29th to canvass the elections and swear in the mayor. July. Now, as you are aware, our Fourth of July celebration is on Monday. Please let me know if you are going, going to attend, if you will bring a guest so I can know what size golf cart to get with Parks and Rec with. But I also wanted to ask y'all if you are okay with canceling the July 5th city council meeting for staff is going to be busy on here and I know y'all might be a little busy, but that's up to y'all if y'all would like to cancel it. If you want it, we could have the meeting, but opinions, suggestions?
Typically, we do.
Uh huh.
And because of the holiday itself and the involvement of staff and our selves and families, whatever, consent to not have a July 5th.
I'm in agreement.
Awesome. And Mr. Harvey, you will have the good hand.
I know we have a lot to do. We always have a lot.
We always have a lot to do.
I understand, so.
And, and I agree with this statement and we can also, you know, we can also schedule another meeting if we.
She's getting ready to get to it. We have two already scheduled that one.
Yes, sir. We have on July 18th, I did reach out to y'all to see if you were available for a special meeting and that would be on the water and wastewater discussion. So that would be Monday on July 18th at 6:00 PM. And then July 19th is going to be a regular city council meeting. July 25th and July 26th is when we begin our board and commission interviews. And then of course, if y'all would like any special meetings, please let me know. Thank you to everybody who provided me your vacations. That's what a lot of the gray area is, so that's why I tried to avoid some of those weeks. So just, we got to be mindful of that too and I can let y'all know. But 29th of July, that's when the city files the budget with me. For August, we have the city council meeting on August 2nd, a town hall on August 11th, a special meeting on August 25th, and August 30th. And those are all budget meetings. And I know August is a little far out, so if y'all have any issues with those dates, please let me know. I will send this out tomorrow with the date so y'all can, you know, examine your calendars a little bit more, but just let me know if you have issues with the August meetings and I will work with the finance department and Ms. Sarita to get those rescheduled if need be.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
For the Tuesday, June 14th, talking about boards and commissions special meeting, is that going to also include an examination of attendance policies?
Yes, sir. I want to cover all that and I want any suggestions for y'all and recommendations for y'all.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, make a suggestion. Two, so one thing that we haven't been good about is, is that we need to go over our rules of procedure and that somewhere needs to be scheduled.
Yes, and I have that on my to-do list, sir. Yes, sir. I'm just waiting for the election to be over and then we'll hit that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. It's 6:25 and we're moving on to item 2B. It's the briefing of the LAD Committee. David Keyes, Executive Assistant to the City Manager, introducing Mr. Jim Jones.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I actually want to introduce the entire committee. We had a very.
I was hoping so. I see a lot of committees.
There, there are many of them here, if not all of them. We actually, we had a very impressive and a very enthusiastic committee that was appointed by the council. We met twice, April 13th and June 2nd. There was a lot of good discussion in that and a lot of great ideas proffered by the committee. I also want to point out though, that they, as a group, met outside of their meetings with staff. And I believe the number that was put out was around 500 man and woman hours to come up with the ideas that they're going to present to you tonight that we emailed out before the meeting. So I'm going to introduce all of them, just real quickly, no particular order. Ms. Mari Vega, Mr. Jim Jones, Mr. Roy Smilam, Mr. Toby Lackey, Mr. Reese Edwards, Mr. Alan Conley, Mr. Mark Graham, Ms. Marcy Buck, Ms. Jen Cole, Ms. Emily Bridges, Mr. Ron Thompson, Ms. Erica Browning, and Mr. Mark Creystale. And with no further ado, I'll turn it over to the committee with their recommendations for the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Jones.
Mr. Jones.
So they can see on the camera.
I can.
There you go.
So I want to say quickly, but the LAD Steering Committee is flattered to have been selected and tasked with supporting the creation of the Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve. We have, as David mentioned, been very serious about this. Since the April 13th meeting, we have put in over 500 hours of labor, including tours, education, trash pickup onsite. But since the April 13th meeting, we have put in about 250 hours in research on the project for establishing the Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve. We are devoted to creating an exceptional nature preserve. We spoke to an astounding number of subject matter experts associated with nature preserves. We spoke with executive directors, PhDs, professionals. We spoke with them locally, statewide, and nationwide. We found them to be extremely generous with their time. They asked good questions. They understood the situation in this town trying to establish a nature preserve and they gave their best educated opinion on establishing and the operation of a preserve in Duncan. So what we did is we compiled all of our research and utilized our findings to establish the foundations of the best available recommendation. So one of the things that we feel like is important is you understand the research that went into this to come up with the best possible recommendation for the establishment of a nature preserve in Duncanville. So with no further ado, met with Mia Brown and Louis Tumaya, directors. He is the Parks and Recreation Director for Dallas County Open Spaces and she does Parks and Recreation for Dallas County and she is for Parks and Recreation Open Spaces. The way Dallas County typically works is they, on their open space program, is they own the property and they lease the property back to the city. The city is responsible for police, fire, and the majority of funding and maintenance. As Louis put it, Dallas County Open Spaces where they run 14 nature preserves in urban Dallas County. They offer the city much thanks and a nod of gratitude to the city and really not much else. They have one property that has a reversion clause, the Lord's property, and they have had reversion problem on that property before. And per Louis, they will almost certainly not entertain the LAD property due to the reversion clause.
And that reversion clause in capsulizing 25 words or less is what?
It is a clawback provision in the deed whereby the original deed setter, would that be right, Mr. Returny?
Grantor.
Either grantor. If it does not meet his expectations, then he can claw back the property. And I think the same thing would happen is the property were to be deeded to any other entity, even from Duncanville as owner. That, that reversion clause exists, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So he suggests the city's task requesting what would be the Duncanville Nature Conservancy, the 501(c)(501) C. the 501(c)(3) that's been formed. Makes no sense regarding the LAD property transfer because Duncanville already owns the property. So, going on, these are notes. It's education. Apparently, of all the open space properties of Dallas, there's 14. Only two of them have bathrooms, to note. They only sign deals, as it were, with cities, not Friends groups. And speaking of the 14 nature preserves and parks that Dallas County runs under its open space program, they only have two Friends groups. So, Mark Steinbach, PhD, he's the executive director of the Texas Land Trust. So, a land trust, there's roughly 20 land trusts in the state of Texas. Land trusts are established to hold conservation easements, property that's being preserved for natural purposes and conserving properties. We discussed in length during the special council meeting on March 7th, protecting the property in perpetuity. And Mr. Haggard, we discussed conservation easements, so on and so forth. So, land trusts are one of the ways in which properties are protected in perpetuity. They are primarily held in South Texas, South Central Texas, and East Texas and they typically are held based on the purview of their protection, which would be like birds, rivers, blackland prairies, and so on. So, the Texas Land Trust was an obvious choice of the 20. We spoke with most of the land trusts. They do not want to roll as a holder of the land conservation easement, although he would be willing to collaborate as a second holder position on a conservation easement. He states that the most advantageous route to establish a nature preserve is if the city owns the property. He stated that cities have immunity, especially regarding liability. He states that anything can be undone, but the conservation easement is permanent. He strongly recommends that the city utilize a conservation easement because it's foolproof, concise, and protects in perpetuity as we extensively discussed during the city council meeting. To us, he stated unambiguously, do not take possession of the land. We would be open to lawsuit, all sorts of issues private landholders have, including the cities, fines, trash, weeds. And then, he stated that the land can be clawed back. Upper Trinity Land Trust, Blake Aldridge. So, it is a local land trust and it is set up to protect the Upper Trinity River watershed for water quality, flood, riparian areas, wildlife, that type of stuff. After conversation with Blake Aldridge, he is willing to consider a conservation easement for this property and was willing to present it to their board as early as July. And then, this Staff and Organized Land Trust. Sierra Club, Victoria Howard, Chair for Conservation. The Sierra Club is very interested in the formation of the preserve and is willing to help however the Sierra Club can, such as trails, planning, spaces, and education. They can be a source of limited funds. She stated to us as a group that we have to decide if we will function as a nonprofit owner or if we will function as an environmental advocacy group, such as a Friends of Group. She strongly suggested that ownership will be problematic, especially regarding funding, and recommended against it. She also stated that grants are available because money is always an issue. Nature Conservancy, David Bezance, Associate Director of Land Protection and Interim Director of Government Relations. He came and visited the property from the Nature Conservancy. It is outside their focus. The Nature Conservancy is not interested in the conservation easement. The Nature Conservancy will not hold the deed. Audubon, Texas, Romy Swanson, Director of Conservation Strategy. Audubon is not interested in holding the conservation easement or deed. Their focus on programming has changed since they aligned with Cedar Ridge Preserve. They are, however, interested in meeting, meeting with the city and the group as a support group and meeting to establish a meeting, a meaningful and helpful relationship. Trust for Public Land, Kerry Kesnicka, Southwest Program Manager. The Trust for Public Land handles the preparation of conservation easements, but they do not hold them. They recommend that, she recommended that we do not take possession of the LAD. She agrees with Mark Steinbach. Issues arise beyond our control. There is a large case for the benefits of the city keeping the deed. She recommends the city keep the deed since the property is already in their ownership. A conservation easement is a perfect foolproof, that word actually came up in a couple of conversations. She suggested that we need a master plan. She said there's organizations that do them. They cost between $5,000 and $20,000. She identified two in Austin and Dallas that will do them. We identified a total of four that will do a master plan. The city should play for the master plan to get a great conservation outcome. This is her statement. Have the city be a large part of the operational preserve and the Friends of Organization. Their obligation will be support, recommendations, keep the nonprofit. Stated that we shouldn't be held to a budget, but that we should help raise money. She stated that the benefits of the city is simply a great community asset and it is very forward-thinking. Sam Kiesnick, Urban Wildlife biologist, Texas Parks and Wildlife, has come to this property multiple times. He established an iNaturalist website. There it is right there. And so far, they've identified almost 500 species, 29 vertebrates. There have been dozens of people that have come to this property to identify for this research grade species identification on that. In fact, one person took a look at apparently a couple of links on there from Russia and corrected it. So, that's the type reach that that is getting, so that's been bringing in people that are interested in that type of issue. So, with the understanding of these best recommendations from the experts, we worked hard to establish the best attainable vision to establish and maintain the preserve based on our task. So, the city council voted. We should consider options 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, as well as any other recommendations that the steering committee would like to make concerning the Charles F. LAD property as described. So, the ownership is a significant issue that has been discussed on the property during the city council meeting and the city attorney during the committee's first meeting. The committee met numerous times since then and we identified the criteria as well understood. We understand the details of each ownership method and we think that we have the best available option that is apparent. The Duncanville Nature Conservancy, upon the recommendation and counsel of our attorney, stated that we cannot take possession of the property and fund the Charles F. LAD Nature Preserve, whereas the city of Duncanville is in the enviable position of owning the property and has voted to establish a nature preserve. The nature preserve requires little in the way of establishment. The city has the equipment and the means to implement and maintain a limited preserve infrastructure as well as you have a Friends group to support efforts on the preserve. The vast majority of preserves do not have the benefit of associated Friends groups. The city has the advantage of immunity from liability. Most, if not all, Texas urban nature preserves are owned and operated by the city or county in which they operate. The city discussed options for protecting the property in perpetuity during the special meeting and there is a straightforward and expensive way to do that, via the conservation easement. The city attorney discussed the possibility of conservation easements during the city council meeting. Easements are foolproof. Encourage grants from outside entities and can be written with allowances that allow for most circumstances that arise now and into the future. Further, federal money and donor grants from businesses and nonprofits are much more accessible with a conservation easement in place. Conservation easements need a land trust to hold it. We've identified the Upper Trinity Land Trust to hold it. We've identified the Texas Land Trust to be a collaborator in the event that the first were to fail. This is actually a pretty substantial term and they are really good partners and we're thankful for their interest. So, as a result of our considerable research with subject matter experts, the following is our recommendations. The Charles F. LAD Nature Preserve will be created to manage and preserve its flora, fauna, and physical features. It will have low intensity maintenance, limited development, self-guided personal experience, focused programming often provided by others, and a diverse and versatile usage. These are the recommendations. One, the city retains ownership of the Charles F. LAD Preserve. Two, the city would be responsible for funding, police, fire, and maintenance. Three, we recommend a conservation easement be established with a minimal term between the city, the Upper Trinity Land Trust, and the LAD committee. Four, the Duncanville Nature Conservancy would be a Friends of Group to the preserve. The DNC would support volunteer efforts at the preserve, maintain nonprofit status, make recommendations, and pursue donations and grants. Five, a master plan would be commissioned by the city to describe in detail all aspects of the nature preserve, as well as to meet the deed requirements of the professional plan on the deed. So, potential costs. We identified that the potential cost to establish this is $148,000 or less. And so, that would include, for example, cable perimeter fencing, cable parking lot, those type of things, signage, a nice sign. Trails will be volunteer-generated and it appears as though the annual maintenance actually would be about $3,000. The original estimate by the city of the nature preserve was about $721,000. And really, some of the major differences on there is that we took out the need for a bridge across the creek. We took out a crushed granite trail that runs for a mile and a half or two miles and those type of things. So, with that, the LAD group, we've worked really hard to comply with all the requests of the city. We incorporated a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We established legal counsel. We exercised due diligence in creating recommendations based on expert experience. And additionally, our volunteers clean the property almost daily. We organized a bio blitz where people all from across North Texas inventoried the species on the property. We created a national profile of the property on iNaturalists. We began working with local media and advertising organizations to develop a comprehensive communications plan benefiting the preserve and all of Duncanville. We created awareness with other organizations and county officials about the innovation on the LAD property that is happening in Duncanville. The DNC is starting to develop work groups to explore the contributions a green space will have for resident, quality of life, engagement of schools, children, scouts, and civic organizations, tourism in the city, economic viability, cultural contributions, education, partnerships and awareness projects. The Master Naturalist Program is a large program that is interested in nature preserves. They are interested in participating on the nature preserve and they want to provide volunteers. The Dallas Sierra Club wants to volunteer with trail design and some seed money and they are in some help being in fundraising, regarding fundraising. The Dallas Sierra Executive Board is meeting tonight as we speak to discuss the LAD preserve and donating funds to it. And talking about funds, it's kind of hard to put the cart before the horse. We don't have a preserve. It's hard to get estimations on funds, but you can kind of see. For example, at the 12 Hills Nature Center, $40,000 were raised by organizations like the Harold Simmons Foundation, the Roy and Christine Sturgis Charitable and Educational Trust, the Fay Young Foundation, the Eugene McDermott Foundation, the Dallas Foundation, and on, and that doesn't include individuals. This is an incredibly devoted group of people. We love our city. We care and we're working hard to be the best partners and make the most exceptional nature preserve and asset for the city of Duncanville. It will be a legacy for Duncanville and its citizens. That being said, many thanks to Mark Graham for his photo story book and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Excellent. A couple of questions in terms of education pieces. My educator on a lot of this is that guy standing right there, Mark Graham. Thank you, Mark, for educating me and understanding a lot about what goes on in that property. What is a cable parking lot?
I would suggest if you've ever been to a state park and you have seen it, it kind of looks like a three-foot tall telephone pole with a round top that has a cable that goes through it, and they would go around the perimeter of the property.
So, what would that parking surface be composed of? Because, you know, when I was talking to you, Mark, we were talking about no impervious surfaces can be put on this land because it's going to cause erosion. So, what is the proposal for this parking lot in terms of its surface?
I think the logical place is going to be on Cedar Ridge. There is already a gate there that is a pretty hard-packed area. There's limestone that is exposed. I think very easily it could be done there.
On Cedar Ridge?
Yeah.
That's not part of the property?
Yeah, it is. It's behind the backside of the creeks.
Oh, that side, okay, okay, got it.
But, there are limestone outcropping on the ground where it's just a little...
It's always stuck up here when we're talking about no impervious surfaces that could cause additional erosion and cause real problems there. So, I was just trying to figure out, and you know, Mr. Jones, what you were saying about the possibility of attracting a lot of visitors to this, I guess that parking spaces could be expanded more than 20 if we had to, if it turns out to be such an attraction for the adjacent cities and I guess for around.
I mean, I think parking could probably be increased if we had some big event, but I think a rotation of people through, I don't think you're going to get cars like we have at Cedar Ridge, 150 cars at a time. We have times when it's more than that, but I think a lot of it's just going to be rotating people coming through. Some people are going to come in the morning, some are in the afternoon. Weekends, I think, it's really busy. Yeah, I think parking would be expanded in that part pretty easily.
Okay. Going back to something you said almost at the very outset on some of your experts, Mr. Tumaya. If I understood you correctly, Mr. Jones, you said Mr. Tumaya recommended not having the DNC. But, everywhere else, as it flows through, the DNC is created and has withstood Mr. Tumaya's decision not to have one. So, I'm a little confused.
No, I think what I said, in fact, what I said is that we could not find a subject matter expert that said that the Friends group should take it. And if I'm understanding your question correctly...
I thought you said that Mr. Tumaya recommended that the DNC not be established.
They recommended that we do not take the property.
Take the deed to it.
The deed to it. The one of the tasks that we had was to consider taking your deed or lease on the property and it was all recommended.
Because I guess what I caught was that real quick little soundbite that Mr. Tumaya said he opposed the DNC establishment, but that's not, I didn't understand that correctly.
In fact, he more than fully supports that.
Okay, okay. Throughout the paper, talks about the DNC and 501(c)(3). Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Well, it was just about the parking. So, there's a couple of models, Wyndham Hill Preserve in DeSoto and Mockingbird is that in Beloitian. There are a couple of models and they're very similar in acreage to the LAD property and they've got maybe 10 parking spaces because again, it's just kind of a rotation. I would imagine with what we have, we would have some special events from time to time to accommodate that, but most equivalent-sized preserves really don't have more than 10 or 12 parking spaces.
All right. Mr. Cherry?
So, question, will this committee continue to oversee this project? That's question one. And two, you mentioned grants and donations. So, who will be responsible for overseeing grants and donations?
I would imagine both, but the, I can't speak for the city, is the Duncanville Nature Conservancy, because we have, so there's really almost three groups going on here. You literally have the city, you have the LAD steering committee, and then you have the Duncanville Nature Conservancy. And the Duncanville Nature Conservancy, I think, intends to pursue grants and help. And that's, it's funny is one of the things that we had a conversation with during the meeting on Thursday night was about funding and grants also. And it's hard to establish a grant for a preserve that might not happen yet, right? That being said, we have already got, the Sierra Club is taking a good, hard look tonight. I can't tell you if it's $1,000. I can't tell you if it's $10,000. You know, I can't tell you how much that that is, except that money, one of the things that is readily apparent in talking to all of the experts is that grants are out there. Businesses like, can't speak for them, Patagonia, Whole Foods, businesses want to give to properties like this.
I have a question.
Mr. Harvey? Yes, sir.
So, obviously, you all have talked to a lot of people and put in a lot of work in putting this together. Have you... Have you all also talked to the neighbors that live adjacent to the property? I'm just curious as to how would they feel, given the fact that the land use will change if it's a nature preserve? I mean, one person's snake might be that neighbor's nuisance. So have you all accounted for that?
I will start a conversation for the group, is that we had a voter petition drive, and we petitioned every neighborhood around the property first. And without exaggeration, I am going to say that literally 95% of people that answered the door, at all, signed the petition, period. And so I'm going to call that evidence that everybody is pretty happy with it. Is that fair?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wilson?
I mean, it was overwhelming. In fact, we, we used to have meetings back then, and we would talk about it, and it literally, it was like if they were, open the door, because you have to remember that there are camera phones and COVID was going on and all of that, and if they were willing to open the phone, the door, and talk about a nature preserve on this piece of property that they've been driving by the whole time they lived here, they signed it. Is that fair?
Yes. So how about Mr. Lad himself? Because we all acknowledge, I think, that if for whatever reason he may not like it, then he can take back his property. Am I stating that correctly? Am I stating that correctly? Yeah. So is anybody talking to him?
So I, and this may be a discussion, a closed session, but I have correspondence with Mr. Lad on this, so if that's something we need to discuss, there we can.
Well, it's something, you know, what we're getting tonight in briefing.
Yeah, it affects your ownership, and that may be something that you need to discuss internally before we discuss it publicly.
Yeah.
Then.
Fair question, interesting for, when we begin to deliberate on this formal, in a formal manner versus just being given recommendations, I'm sure there's going to be substantive conversation on the uses and what Mr. Lad would like to see in terms of this happen, because the deed does not set aside the entire property as being untouched in a natural state. It does account for museums and arts and so forth beyond that property. So it would be up to Mr. Lad to give us some inputs in terms of how you can see the entire property being used as well. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Kowd.
Question. Mr. Jones? So in the, I mean, your recommendations section, four, I think, I think I got my Roman numerals correct, yes, four, you have it recommended to be carried out phases. And so you're just looking at the initial phase, is there, what's the cost just associating, just authorizing, creating, establishing, sort of, no cost of cost? And we wouldn't be bound to any particular timeline where we would have to get parking by a certain time, we would have to get cable, we would have some time to raise those funds. That's fair.
I have another question, because I live on Cedar Hill Road, and all I hear is complaints about the traffic with the school. And so I would just say, it needs to be considered where traffic would flow, that when people, what we're saying, people coming in from all around, because that was one of the things with me campaigning, you know, what are we going to do about the traffic from the, from the school? We get so much traffic, and I know that's at a, you know, a certain amount of time, but I know a lot of hikers and we like early in the morning, because I'm the one that gets out early in the morning, you know, so take that into consideration, too.
Another thing that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so the, because of establishing a nature preserve is, doesn't cost anything, does it create an expectation?
Well, certainly it would. There's already expectations now. Certainly it would.
Can't avoid it. It's expected now. Good deal.
So a quick question under whatever purview land trusts come under, is there a differentiation between a nature preserve and a nature conservancy?
So I'm going to call a nature conservancy is an organization. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yes, you're right. Conservancy is a group of people.
So this would be designated as a nature preserve? Is there any differentiation? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Contras.
Well, one other question, Mr. Marison, I'm going to ask. Now, by the retention of the property by the city, that maintains all the liability as well, I understand that. Again, talking with my educator and walking around the property, entrance to the creek itself can be precarious. In fact, in most places, it's precarious. If you're not careful, you could hurt yourself pretty easily. I think one of the things that was considered by the staff when looking in terms of creating this is getting down to the creek, creating some places to where it would be more agreeable, I guess, or for those individuals that might be.
More accessible.
More accessible, that injury would be precluded. But making those access, those accessibility areas to the creek itself, I think, would take some cost. What cost, I don't know. I mean, it could be timbers, it could be crushed gravel and so forth, but it has to be some excavation to make those entries down into the creek more accessible, and I think some of that cost was incorporated and something to be thought about.
Mr. Mayor, as we're getting short on time.
Yes.
There are, there are some very casual ingress and egress portions on that creek, and there's always going to be exposure on it. And I would suggest that even if there was development out of the parts of the property, unless you put a bioduct through there, the exposure to any, any person is going to exist. It's, I guess when it comes down to the conversation about liability, multiple people, in fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Hager, is that the city has immunity, right? And the other experts brought it up, in fact, that it was the overwhelming reason why an organization like ours couldn't take the property, is that it's simply, even if it's not cost prohibitive, you almost can't get enough coverage. And I may be speaking out of term, but literally, there is a reason why literally 100% of all nature preserves like this are owned by the city or the camp. And this issue with immunity or, is one of them, is why that is. Is that fair?
Sure. Thank you.
If you're talking about the natural trails going down to the creek, so, yeah, they need to be improved, they can be, you can use probably some of the wood out there and create steps down towards the bottom. So, yeah, I think it can be done.
But the volunteers could do that as well.
Yeah, they would.
Would have to be staff, okay.
Councilmember Contras.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Contras, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be quick, and I just need to back up a little bit, make sure. Mr. Jones, did you, during your presentation right now, did you call out the cost or estimated cost for the conservation easement?
The conservation easement is, as I recall, about $5,000 to $35,000, give or take. We have a discussion, you want to talk about that for?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thankfully.
And you are, sir?
I am Roy Smilam, I'm a committee member, and I've also written conservation easements. The fortunate thing about conservation easements is these land trusts that hold these conservation easements do not feel any proprietary sense over the writing of the easements. So they will allow us to use their templates for writing the easement. I already have a template for creating a world-class conservation easement, and it can be done very cheaply for $5,000 to $10,000. And, but.
Which would be raised by the DNC, I presume.
I'm sorry?
Which would be raised by the DNC, I presume.
I think that's something that could be negotiated, agreed simply, but it would be cheap, and it has the very good, it functions well to establish that the preserve will persist in perpetuity, and it establishes a research baseline. This is a snapshot of what the land looked like at the time it became a preserve. And so research can build on that, it's a springboard, and that is attractive to, for getting donations.
Well, city manager, we, and committee, thank you for the hundreds of hours of work you put into this for a superb presentation and superb piece of paper here. As you are all aware, we are heading into budget season, you heard city secretary talk about special meetings coming up on our budget. What this then means is that the DNC, the committee, needs to meet very carefully with our city manager and Parks, Rec, and those directors, those appropriate directors, to decide which of these costs will be borne by the DNC and which of these costs will be borne by the city, because right now, none of these costs are included in our budget. And so it goes back to, I think, what Mr. Kowd was mentioning in terms of timing, the best that we can do in cooperation and collaboration with the DNC and the entire city is to not set so many milestones for ourselves other than set some meetings to determine how this budgetary process can work into the funding of what needs to be done for the property as well. So it's going to take us a little time. And as we come into June and July, you saw the dates that we'll be meeting, City Council to talk about budget. I think it bears some kind of, not a sense of urgency, but a sense of timing on the DNC to make appointments with the city manager to say, here's what we think we can raise from the DNC, here's what we think the city would help us out with, and how those monies can then be incorporated into our future budget, because it's going to be important to us. Every dollar that we spend, we are responsible to you, as a taxpayer, and that budgetary process is very, very detailed, and I wouldn't say cumbersome, but it's very detailed. And it's a learning process, especially for new council members coming on to understand how this is going to be incorporated. So thank you very much. Any closing comments from any council?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I'm not sure that we formally committed to doing a nature conservatory, and we're going to put it into the budget.
There is no commitment on the part of the city. What I'm saying is that these recommendations are going to be considered by, between the DNC and staff, brought to the council for further discussion, some of which is going to need to be in executive session as well. I think in terms of what we are doing, we are accepting the report tonight.
Oh, definitely.
Almost as if we have, as we accepted the audit report for our financial stability, we accept this report and the recommendations, as a city council, we accept the information.
We have the template to do that, I'm confident we can raise money to make it happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have an invitation. I really thank you guys with the love to come tour the land, a lot of you still have not.
I agree.
I think it's time that we get as many of y'all down there and look around. And we can talk all about this stuff, and what I was going to is, it is a beautiful piece of property, and.
Go in the morning.
Or late in the day, either way, yeah. Anytime, I'd be more than happy to lead a group down there, our individually.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea, because I'm going to call it the back 40 that is not normally seen, where you took, where you took me back there. I've been in that area before, I mean, I've been down there looking around the stuff, but I've never gone as deeply into the acreage, is what you.
It's prettier now.
And so it needs to be a guided tour, number one, for safety. It needs to be a guided tour, so city manager, you know, working with them, we can do however we can do it. Now, I'm always guide on the rules, because we don't want to quarrel. So all seven of us together going down in there.
We'll do Noah's flood, two by twos.
Yeah, yeah, very careful composition of.
I can't compare what I say, though, because it probably won't be the same.
I'm sorry, is there a reason why we can't have a court?
It's a walking court, anything you'd.
No, I'm saying, can we call a meeting?
Yeah, we could call a meeting, the problem is unless everybody gets to go in the city that may want to go to see the council interact with the proponents or the opponents, would might be denied access. You've got an access issue, because I don't think you want 3,000 people down there. Not that many come to the meetings, but if I am, let's just say I'm Bob, and I've broken my leg, which I have done, and I can't get down there, then I'm now denied access to the council. So because of what it is, where it is, and how you can access it, it may deny someone access to a public meeting, which gets us in trouble with the.
So it's better to just have informational tours guided, just for.
I think they'll have my number, whatever, contact me.
Three.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we are over time, and we are past the seven o'clock hour, we have, you know, city council, we have executive session. City council, city council, city attorney.
Yes.
It is necessary to remove executive session at the end of the city council, if you do not have time to take care of it right now.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Time?
Seven, what is it, 7:08?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 7th, 2022 city council meeting, calling it to order at 7:20. And again, we apologize for running late. If you've been to some of our city council meetings before, we're a conversant city council, we do tend to talk a bit, so thank you for understanding that and being with us tonight. So first thing that we have for our agenda tonight is the invocation, and the invocation is by Pastor Robert Castillo from Duncanville's First Baptist Church. Please rise. Pastor Castillo.
Yes. It's a privilege and an honor to be among people that love our city, and it's a privilege to pray. Psalm 117 says, praise the Lord, all nations extol him, all people, for great is his steadfast love toward us, and the faithfulness of the Lord endures forever. Praise the Lord. Father, thank you that we can call upon you, and Father, thank you because you are in love with us, and Father, you care about everything in our lives, in our cities, in our world. And Father, right now, we place this time in your hands, and Father, thank you for this council, Father, and we pray that you enlighten, that you, Father, guide, and Father, you be glorified in everything, and that which is decided and done will be for the good of our city. So Father, thank you, thank you for this time, and we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor Castillo, por favor, en español?
En español.
Por favor.
Padre, gracias que podemos acudir a tu trono y saber que tú nos escuchas, y gracias por ese amor incondicional que nos tienes. Señor, bendice esta reunión y cada uno de los miembros de este aguante, señor, guíalos, darles entendimiento, señor, y que todo lo que se haga. Señor, guíalos, darles entendimiento, señor, y que todo lo que se haga sea para el engrandecimiento de esta ciudad y para el bienestar de cada uno de los habitantes de este pueblo. Tú eres un Dios de todas las naciones. Lo pedimos en Jesús. Amén.
Amen.
Gracias.
Please join me in pledges to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please be seated.
I'm going to deviate somewhat, just a little bit, not a whole lot. You may be aware, if you've attended city council meetings before, that one of the things that I do is we do recognize champions of our city. These are individuals who invested in our city, are participants in our city, and do a great deal for our city. Now, we are called the City of Champions, and it has become an accolade because of our athletic prowess coming from our schools. However, a champion of the city, in my regard, and as we have regarded in the council, can be the arts, can be the media, can be education, it can be business. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing an individual whom I consider a minister and an organizational person, and that is Ms. Cassandra Shedd. I've gotten to know Young Life prior to getting to know Cassandra. My wife and I have, are familiar with Young Life and what it does for children in the city, but as well, we've gotten to know Cassandra. And I would like to recognize her as a champion of our city. Cassandra Shedd. Ms. Shedd and her husband, Reginald, are Duncanville residents for 29 years. She takes pride in knowing her neighbors and, more importantly, their children. Her passion is Jesus Christ and kids, which led to her dream job of area director of Duncanville Young Life in 2010. Young Life has been at Duncanville for 68 years. Its mission is to bridge the gap that often exists between the community, its schools, and the city. Ms. Shedd's personal vision is to serve the children, their families, and the community to rewrite life stories, one student at a time. As a young lady, Cassandra vividly recalls driving to Duncanville for joint meetings between the Oak Cliff and Duncanville Young Life chapters in the mid-1980s. Not to date yourself or anyone else. During her 12 years on staff, Cassandra daily endeavors to connect the children and families which she serves with anyone who has a heart for kids in Duncanville. For her unceasing investment in our community and its children, Ms. Cassandra Shedd is hereby recognized as a champion of the city. As mayor of the City of Duncanville, I ask our residents to join me in congratulating Ms. Shedd on this memorabilia. Got a few friends here tonight?
Thank you. I know a lot of you are here, and I thank you for taking the time on a Tuesday to come and be with me to accept this award. I honestly don't do it alone. It takes so many volunteers and staff to do what we do in a city this big with a high school that big. And so thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your prayers. Thank you for your partnership, but most importantly, thank you for the kids. Keep having kids.
And with this, I want to give you the medallion for the City of Duncanville. And Alex is going to take some photo. Anybody else with life, with Young Life that would like to come up, please come on up and join Cassandra in the photos. Here you go.
Yes, all of you who know who you are, please don't make me call your name. No, I will.
I can't say my name.
Come here. I hear you're somebody, my neighbors, family, friends.
Actually, I'm actually, actually, um, the number three. Exactly.
You love that. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, then that'll be, I'll take that one. All right. It's always a pleasure to be able to do that. Just a little housekeeping for everyone present tonight. You'll notice that we have two vacant seats, even though one vacant seat has a human being in it. Mr. Vera Cruz, council member Vera Cruz, is the chaplain for the Dallas Fire Department, and he has duties tonight that require him to be present for that. And Mr. Contreras from District Five is not feeling 100%. However, he is participating with us by video. And as we are stipulating by rules, he must be present by video at all times. And as such, he is also ready to vote, and he must do so by verbal and by hand vote, so we can make sure we get that. So we are proceeding, and you understand how that's going to be operating. So moving on to Item 1B, any council members' reports?
The agenda tonight, I will forego a report, and you do have my weekly reports.
Moving on to Item Two, Proclamations and Presentations. Proclamation and recognition of Juneteenth. And I have asked council member Karen Cherry to make that presentation. And while she is coming up, what I would like to do is ask all African-American city staff members to come up and to receive this proclamation. If you would come forward, please.
So, okay. This read is follows Office of the Mayor, Duncanville City of Champions Proclamation. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived at Galveston, Texas to enforce President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation and declare freedom for all slaves. And whereas each year thereafter, former Texas slaves and their descendants joined in a celebration of freedom on June 19th, and the day became known as Juneteenth. And whereas across our nation, Americans continue to celebrate Juneteenth, a day to reflect upon the suffering of slaves and to remember the joyful Declaration of Freedom. And whereas it is a time of rejoicing with family and friends and a time for planning the future. And whereas the 200, I'm sorry, and whereas the 2022 Best Southwest Juneteenth Celebration will be held June 18th, 2022, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Lancaster Community Park, 1700 Veterans Memorial Parkway in Lancaster, Texas. Now therefore, on behalf of Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022 as Juneteenth Recognition Day in Duncanville, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the importance of this day in history of the African-American culture. This celebration acknowledges the history and important part of American society and aids in unifying our city and our nation as a whole. Thank you. Good luck, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 2B, Presentation of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful May 2022 Business Beautification Award Plaque and Proclamation to Starbucks located at 106 East Highway 67, presented by council member Koontz and received by Mr. Timothy Hamilton, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Duncanville. And
Timothy?
Tracy? There she is.
It's the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Business Beautification Award awarded to Starbucks number 62184. And receiving this award, Tracy Slate, manager at that Starbucks. Whereas the City of Duncanville is committed to improving the physical quality of community life, and whereas the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board was established to promote this commitment. And whereas the mission of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board is to empower Duncanville citizens and businesses to take responsibility for enhancing their community environment. And whereas each quarter, the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board recognizes one commercial property within the city for significant improvements to the exterior portion of the property, landscape improvements, and/or long-term maintenance of the property that exemplifies high-quality standards. And whereas the Starbucks located at 106 East Highway 67 has been selected as the Business Beautification Award recipient for May 2022. Now therefore, on behalf of Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, I do hereby urge all residents to join me in congratulating the Starbucks located at 106 East Highway 67 and commending this business for contributing to the beautification of our city.
I'd like to recognize, too, we have our chair here as well as Mrs. Slate, so our committee chair, Mary Ann Taylor, as well. So thank you. Thank you so much for working with us.
Next item on the agenda, Item 2C, Recognition of Keep Duncanville Beautiful Summer 2022 Curb Appeal Residential Properties, presented by Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure this evening to be able to share some of the outstanding residential properties that our board members have discovered within each of the districts represented here. And so I will, without further ado, get into the winners of the Summer 2022 Curb Appeal Residential Properties. Representing District One, and I'm going to ask that if you are present in the audience, as we invite every one of the winners to come down, we'll ask that you come down at the end, and we'll get a group picture, if you would, please. District One, we have Ronald and Leatris Morris, 607 Green Hills Road. District Two's property is Susie Taylor at 250 Timothy Trail. District Three's property is Rose Alba in Teresa Retana at 507 Flamingo Way. District Four, the winner is Moses Petierna at 303 Silver Creek Drive. And District Five's winner is Samuel and Terry Germany at 1247 Lodima Lane. And so if you are present here, and I do know that Mrs. Taylor is present, and I did get an email from Mr. Germany, he was not going to be able to make it tonight. He is a theater director for Family Music Theater in Cedar Hill, and they have a rehearsal for the Cinderella play that they're having down there at the high school. So, Ms. Taylor, if you would be willing to come down, and also Chair Taylor, please. Anyone else?
I guess you didn't hear, that's Mr. Morris from District One, right? Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And moving on to Item 2D, Discussion of Potential TexDOT Sites for Beautification of 2021 GCAA Award Funds. Mr. Hamilton, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Yes, back in April of 2021, Keep Duncanville Beautiful was awarded $210,000 in the, for the Governor's Community Achievement Awards in our population category. And so this is awarded from TexDOT, which is passing along federal funds for beautification on highways in Texas. The goal is a landscape project that fulfills the winning city's expectations, and we have examples of that already currently on I-20. The project must be located in TexDOT right-of-way, so that really limits it to I-20 or Highway 67. Gateway monuments are no longer approved by the Federal Highway Administration, who is the originator of the funds. And so some of you all may be aware of some cities in the near to us that have some pretty substantial monuments that they've done that were beneficial out of these funds, but we no longer are able to do that ourselves. And so staff is seeking direction on the city council's preference between the two areas that have been vetted by TexDOT as potential sites. So I'll get right into that. We have featured on the map here Section A and B1 and B2. So B1 and 2 are considered to be one area and would be 210,000 for that area. And Section A, which is at Cedar Ridge and I-20, would be one section itself. And so I'll slide to the next area here. And this depicts the ornamentals and large shrubs and the beautification that is going to be very similar to what we already see on I-20 at the Main Street and Duncanville Road exits there. So this is a first area of Duncanville on the west side of I-20 that you would encounter. So it seemed like a great opportunity to increase the beautification in I-20. Also featured is Highway 67, which many of you all may already be seeing the construction that is going on currently with the green ribbon funds that also are passed through from the Federal Highway Administration to TexDOT, and that helps fund that. And that's actually how we were able to do what we did on I-20 back in the day. They, we won 95,000 back in 2008, and they added about another 200, 250,000 to that to in total give We have featured on the map here, Section A and B1 and B2. So B1 and 2 are considered to be one area and would be 210,000 for that area. And Section A, which is at Cedar Ridge and I-20, would be one section itself. And so I'll slide to the next area here. And this depicts the ornamentals and large shrubs and the beautification that is going to be very similar to what we already see on I-20 at the Main Street and Duncanville Road exits there. So this is a first area of Duncanville on the west side of I-20 that you would encounter. So it seemed like a great opportunity to increase the beautification in I-20. Also featured is Highway 67, which many of you all may already be seeing the construction that is going on currently with the green ribbon funds that also are passed through from the Federal Highway Administration to Text Dot, and that helps fund that. And that's actually how we were able to do what we did on I-20 back in the day. We won 95,000 back in 2008, and they added about another 200, 250,000 to that to in total give us what we have. So it's a great opportunity and collaboration. So the second area that is depicted here is to extend right by Costco there, that's the Costco entrance. That would extend it all the way down to Main Street intersection, what is already going to be green ribbon to the left of that, or bottom left. So right now, that will already be beautified. So it's not making a, it's just adding to what's already there, kind of. So here's an example of the plant palette that would be used. A lot of perennials, a lot of hardy perennials that do not take a lot of water. As it is a Text Dot right-of-way, it must be irrigated with drip irrigation, so there would be no overhead sprays. And then also would be some use of some hardscapes like Large River Rock and others as well. And that is the end of the presentation, and just would look for any questions that you all might have about this.
So, Mr. Hamilton, what you're looking for, the $210,000 can be spent for all of the recommendations, all the locations you've identified, or we have, those have to be split?
So it's either A for 210,000, or B 1 and B2, which together equal 210,000.
Yes, Mr. Koontz.
Could you go back to the slide, just had a quick question. Are those all natives?
Those are all natives, yes, sir. Yes. Yeah, that's a big requirement of Text Dot. They're the ones that really dictate the palette more, so. This actually is, these depictions here on the highway and everything has been provided by Text Dot engineers. They're the ones who did that. We actually, that was part of the delay in getting this done. There's a new engineer in our area now, and so we've got this now in hand.
So the city manager, what the staff is asking us to do as a council is to identify either A or B for the use of the $210,000 tonight.
Yes, sir.
Any comments from staff, I mean from council? Any preferences? Mr. Mack, oh, I'm sorry. How we got, see, Mr. Koontz?
I think he beat me to it. I, I'm sorry, are we supposed to be making a decision on this tonight? Because I hadn't seen any of the options until just now.
So it's a matter of what the preference would be, so we would come back to you all again with the more developed plan. This is what Text Dot is considering, like a 30% idea of what it would be from a high level. But there, if you have other sites, but in going over with Text Dot, we're kind of limited on our locations based on what is already there. And kind of like on Highway 67 with what's already being done, there's already so much being done there, it was just trying to enhance that a little bit. So there's, with it being restricted to Text Dot right-of-way, that also further restricts it and causes it not to be as easy.
Will we be able to compare, say, some conceptual images of what our options will look like?
So you would like some more, like, ground-level type of depictions?
I think what they're doing is, so, once they, once we saw, a lot of times we'll come back and just say, well, this is the site we're recommending. But because we had two options, we wanted to get council's consensus on which option makes the most sense. Once we get past that, then the landscape design person will then go in and design that site. And so that's the next phase of the development, but we have to identify which site they would design for, and so.
Yeah, they're typically not going to develop that level of design for both places. So they need a little bit of direction as to which would be more favorable or more deemed as desirable by council.
Mr. Mack Burnett, then I see Mr. Contreras has his hand up, so Mr. Backburnet and then Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the location, I'll go with A, the Cedar Ridge and I-20 location.
All right, Mr. Contreras, comment, please.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get oriented to A. Is that a northbound picture?
Northbound on Cedar Ridge, yes, sir. On the left, yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would, I would go with A as well. Thank you.
I would consider A as my preferred choice as well. Any other? A, 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 you got an A. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
As Mr. Koontz has asked, you know, we will be seeing more detailed plans on how it's going to be incorporated.
Yes, sir, most certainly. We'll be getting back with Text Dot and with their landscape design team, and they'll get us further details. Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And thank you for working hard to get $210,000 for us.
You bet.
Thank you.
It was an honor, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Number 3, Citizens' Input. During election season, it is the policy of the City of Duncanville not to broadcast citizen comments or record them. So pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunities addressed to City Council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the Act prohibits the City Council from delivering any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council-directed rules and limitations permitted by law. And those council-permitted limitations are a two-minute discussion by the individual who is called forward to present their comments. What I have in front of me are some comments that have asked to been read, and interestingly, as we have an item on the agenda tonight, which is a public hearing. And as is the practice of this council, when an individual has an item that they want to, they've filled out a card for a citizen comment, but it pertains to a public hearing item, what we do is ask that individual to come forward during the public hearing portion, rather than being limited to the two-minute citizen comment portion. So as that occurs on Item 5A, those individuals will be called forward to have their, to make their comments as a public hearing portion rather than a citizen comment portion. Agenda, it's a consent agenda. City Secretary, would you please read the consent agenda items?
Item 4A, consider the minutes for the May 10th City Council Special Meeting, May 17th City Council Regular Meeting, and May 26, 2022 City Council Special Meeting. 4B, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Rockdale Country Ford LLC through Buy Board Contract Number 601-19 to approve the procurement of eight Ford SUVs in the total expenditure amount of $252,358.5. 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Texas Department of Transportation Selective Traffic Enforcement Program in the amount of $12,000 utilized to fund highly visible speed deterrence patrols during operation slowdown. 4D, consider a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022 procurement of police ammunition from GT Distributors in Austin, Texas through Buy Board Contract Number 603-20, and the contract amount discounted price in the amount not to exceed $128,000. 4E, consider a resolution authorizing the final contract renewal with Core &amp; Main LP with an estimated expenditure amount of $250,000. 4F, consider a resolution suspending the June 17, 2022 effective date of Encore Electric Delivery Company's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the Steering Committee of Cities served by Encore to hire legal and consulting services and to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public, sorry, as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel for the Steering Committee. 4G, consider a resolution approving an offer of a hotel occupancy tax grant for FY 2022-23 budget in the amount of $85,000 to Hoot Fest Basketball Organization for the 14th Annual Thanksgiving Hoot Fest to directly enhance and promote tourism and the hotel industry conditional upon approval in FY 2022-2023 budget. 4H, consider a resolution approving the submittal of FY 2022 Community Development Block Grant Project Activity Applications for CDBG Funds with Dallas County.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair Linten, motion to approve consent items.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mack Burnett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. Council, please vote. And Mr. Contreras, we will ask for both a voice and a hand signal from you on this vote. So why don't you go ahead and do that first, and then we will take the electronic vote.
Vote to approve.
Approve, council. Unanimously approved, thank you. Next item on the agenda, excuse me, Items for Individual Consideration. Citizens and individuals participating and council members. I am going to recuse myself from this item. I have discussed the purpose of which with the city manager and with our city attorney. And the purpose for my recusal is that I have an agency relationship with an individual owning property within the perimeter of this particular planned development on this item. So with that, I will be departing the City Council chambers. I'll be turning the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim Harvey for his conduct of Item 5A. City Secretary, please note the time of my departure at 7:58.
So what I would like to do and ask before I begin is to ask the city manager and the city attorney to be both guide and guardrails as we navigate through this particular portion of the agenda. Okay, so it says here, and I think the mayor alluded to this earlier during citizens' comments, when members of the public would like to speak on an item that's going to be covered by a public hearing, then our, as a council, is to move those citizens who would like to speak during a public hearing, move those separately. Because what happens in the public hearing is that rather than being limited to two minutes under the earlier section of citizen comments, on this portion of the agenda, each side gets to speak for a total of 10 minutes. And I think we've done in the past, when there are a number of speakers that want to speak either one way or the other on a particular item, then if those individuals would like to get together and delegate their time to a person to speak, then they can do that, and then that can take up to 10 minutes. So hopefully, with what I've explained, I haven't muddied the waters anymore. So I think at this point, it would be appropriate if we open the public hearing.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tim, why don't we read the caption for the item which frames the issue for the public hearing? And then traditionally, we've had staff presentation first, and then we'll hear from the public. So I, if you'll indulge me, I'll read the item for you.
Go right ahead.
Item 5A, conduct public hearing for consideration in action regarding the request of Antonio Zampella, applicant representing Eagle Rose Construction LLC owner, to include a planned development PD for a planned development, single-family residential district on One Haven, Block 5, Lots 4 through 6, more commonly known as 618-702 and 708, Caven Road, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas.
Thank you, sir. As we, as was entered right into record, this is 618-702-708, Caven Road. The applicant's request is to allow a planned development, single-family residential district, SFR 6, to allow 42 single-family lots, along with a community park, a pet park on approximately 8.816 acres. The future land use map for destination for this particular area is parks and open space currently, and the current zoning for this particular property, for these three lots, excuse me, currently, are SF10, single-family residential lot. And I'll show you a visual later on throughout the presentation. Well, this is a planned development, and I'll get into the specifics of the planned development, but this is what the applicant is requesting. This is slightly different than the existing single-family districts that the city currently has, which we currently have FS7, I mean SF10, which are commonly throughout the city. This is one that will actually be reducing or proposing to reduce the lots to roughly 5,000 square feet, which is basically giving it the moniker SF6. And it's going along with a lot of other things with the two minimum parking spaces under garage, and basically have a 50% lot coverage. And it's also requiring that there be a minimum living floor area of 2,000 square feet. And this is basically the structure, the minimum of 2,000 square feet, just for clarification. All right. As I mentioned earlier, to give you a little bit more information about a planned development for those that may not be familiar with it, it's commonly known as a PD. And the lingo is a type of zoning used to permit new and innovative concepts and land use, not permitted by the existing zoning districts, which of course, we stop at SF7, which is roughly 7,000 square feet. And as they're going below 7,000 square feet, they're looking and proposing to do 5,000 square feet, henceforth the PD request before you today. And basically, these, it's also the development projects that exist in districts that the districts don't currently accommodate, henceforth the requests. This is actually to basically provide a nuance because of the landscape, so that way they can provide the smaller lots within the particular area that they're requesting. Let's actually repeat from the last thing. A majority of what you find under PD, just for emphasis from this, is under 6.06 within our ordinance, our CZO, excuse me. All right, this is to give you a pictorial display of where the lot is actually located. You have Cockrell Hill to the east of the property, Caven Road to the north of the property. And this is only indicating the lot in the center, the lots to the left and to the right of it. Those three lots consisting are the lots in record. And there's another slide that'll give you a better depiction of that. This is right here showing you the area of requests, showing those three lots together. And this is a photo of the front of the property off Caven Road, looking down into the center of the property, to the right. Just to kind of give you an idea of what the zoning is around it, the property directly abuts to the south of it, SF7, which is the brownish tint color below the yellow, currently is SF10, as mentioned earlier. And if you look along Cockrell Hill, that's purple, which denotes the commercial zoning districts along Cockrell Hill. This is just a plot indicating the three lots, just to kind of give you a better depiction of that. And this is what the proposal is for the 42 lots, along with the open space park and the pet park. All right, just to give you a little, a little background of what occurred through planning and zoning a little while ago in May, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for the applicant's request. There were 112 notifications that were sent out around the 200-foot buffer of the 112 notifications that were sent out. As of today, we received six citizen comment cards that were not in favor of the request. And that's all for my presentation. And just to give you a little housekeeping, the property owners, I mean, the project manager is here to provide you all with a presentation as well, so just wanted to let you know about that as well. Thank you. Any questions or comments or concerns for staff?
Okay, let's hear from the project manager. Let's hear from the project manager.
Good evening. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for having me here today. I just want to preliminarily say, it was a beautiful proclamation earlier, the Juneteenth proclamation. I definitely stand in solidarity as one of the principles of Eagle Rose Development and Construction. We are pleased to celebrate this rich culture with the rest of America here, and we have decided to add that as a holiday, as a paid vacation holiday for our employees internally. And so we'll be celebrating that. So I just wanted to kind of say something nice about the proclamation that occurred here. It was a beautiful proclamation. I'll just dive right into this here, while y'all take a look at those pictures here. Like I said, I'm one of the principles of Eagle Rose Development, and we're very excited about this project here today. Thank you, Mr. Tennant, for giving you a brief overview about what this project is to us and what it can be to the city as well. Just a quick overview of our team here. My name's Eli. Like I said, myself and Yosef are the developers here. We have a couple of years of experience, my partner Yosef, out of a New Jersey-based company, development company out there. Yes, sorry. Yes. We currently have four different developments going up in North Texas, and this is the development that we are looking to get started down here as well. With me here today is our architect also, Antonio Zampella, with 27 years of experience in architecture, as well as, on our team, we have Jose Gonzalez de Diego, who has 10 years of experience all in industrial, commercial, and residential design and construction. Our engineers also between them have many years of experience. Our primary engineer on this project is Chris Dodd. He worked with Tech Dot for 12 years and has 29 years of experience in the public and the private sectors. And we also have been working with half-engineering, established in 1950, and they're helping us with the hydraulic portion of this, which we'll get to in just a minute here. And then we have a vast construction team as well, headed by Edgar Torres with 12 years of experience, and Aaron Perez, who just handed out the papers to you all tonight with eight years of experience in new build construction. So just wanted to give you a quick overview of our team here. The featured property, like you saw real quick, it used to be part of Chris Perez Park. The property has long been unused. It's been used as a dump site for trash and other materials. It's been uncamped and unregulated. And we have some projections of what we'd like to do with the property here. Thank you very much. So just as a quick recap, it's about 8.8 acres. We would hope to put 42 homes here, four bedrooms, two and a half bathroom homes, with green spaces, creekfront amenity package, including a children's playground, gazebos, and a dog park. Our project mission is create beautiful and accessible housing options, minutes away from the heart of Dallas, in line with the Keep Duncanville Beautiful project. This is again, some of what you just saw. Bottom right, I'll direct you to the bottom right photo there. We have proposed a noise-reducing privacy fence there between our property and the property of our neighbor, who has kindly agreed to join today. She's not agreed, she has shown up today, and we are planning to put a noise-reducing fence between our property and hers, as well as to create some privacy there. The benefits of the city of Duncanville are vast, the main being the increased area consumer base, 42 new potential upper-middle-class families. That brings in property taxes of approximately $12,000 per year, based on our current home size, the inner-school district taxes, the city utility payments, local business sales tax, as well as supporting local industry and locally-owned businesses with all these new families that will move in here. Additionally, the idea is to enhance the community aesthetic, to raise the bar for the city's standards, and increase the value of the surrounding properties. Another big factor here, and like was mentioned earlier tonight, crime seems to be a factor in some of these areas here, and a new development like this one is shown to reduce crime in the area that new developments come into, especially ones with ours with perceived barriers like our entryway monumentation. And crime statistics show that neighborhoods are safer if they are not within the sight of traffic lights, in close proximity to a church, which there are two churches right down the block from this one, and not directly off of a major thoroughfare, all of which describe our property. So we'd like to take the property from the position it's in now, where it seems to be used for some of that on the side, and change that. Additionally, there's a housing shortage in the DFW region, a big housing shortage. The average price of home in Duncanville is approximately $275,000, and the houses stay on the market for about 14 days. With our properties, that we plan to bring into this area, four bedroom, two and a half bathrooms, with approximately 2,250 square feet, the sales price would be $427,000 approximately. And the idea being that that is easy enough for a starter home, for somebody living within the DFW region, but we're not trying to go too fancy and price out just folk who are just looking for a nice place to live. And we all know that Duncanville is one of those places that people want to come to live to, live in, apologize. The bottom there is just a couple of photos of, they're just proposed photos of what our homes would look like. Additionally, energy efficiency is something that the city of Duncanville is working toward with, the city of Duncanville library recently put in some energy-efficient solar panels on its roof. There's no actual energy-efficient program right now in Duncanville, but our homes are going to be framed to allow for structural solar panel use, as well as, our company right now is looking into using solar streetlights to be more energy-efficient that way, and solar shingles as well. The development process here is, we are currently undergoing a city-mandated flood study, so that's approximately a six-month process. While that goes on, we have our engineers working on their plans. We are working, like with tonight, zoning, plating, permitting, the entire process through there. And then we are also working with Mr. Timothy Hamilton on the tree removal and site preparation process. We've been talking back and forth for a while now. After that, we would proceed with infrastructure build-out, like roads, utilities, storm drainage, creek crossing, and then building out the homes and selling home to the end buyer. The expected total project completion, should we continue with this project, is 24 months. And we would of course be fully compliant with all city code, keeping our job site orderly and clean, and adhere to the allowed work hours, not working outside of hours. The current barriers that we're facing with this project is, if you notice the creek that's running right through those properties, 618-702 and 708, that does create a bit of a barrier. The city is mandating a flood study, and we are fully compliant with that. We are going through that right now. That is a costly endeavor. The tree mitigation, this property is heavily treed as well, and that will be at a considerable cost to the developer to remove and replace some of those trees as well. And then the rising materials costs are other considerations that we have as developers here. Zoning as a planned development, like Mr. Timothy, like Mr. Tennant spoke about tonight, with 5,000-square-foot lots, would definitely help create improved feasibility on our project from a financial standpoint. At the same time, I will note that our focus is to try to maintain as many of the trees as possible and try to keep as green a space as possible, as noted by the green spaces, the kids' park and the dog area. But we have had a tree survey completed, and the beautiful trees that have been around for a long time are not trees that we're looking to remove. That is the end of the presentation. I am fully open to any questions, comments, concerns.
Thank you for your thorough presentation, council. Any questions for our presenter?
Councilmember Contreras has his hand raised, too.
Councilmember Contreras, please ask your questions.
Yes, thank you. In the documents you provided, the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is a statement in there showing that these houses have, on average, 2,000 square feet of living space, or 2250, I think it was. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that living space, or does that include the garage?
That does not include the garage.
Okay. And you have a 20-foot setback on those front yards?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to get back to that a little bit in a minute, if you don't mind, but the, when the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this, did they have any questions about, or did they visit any of the job sites that you may have developed in the area?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Are those, you have projects in the area that have been open for a while?
In this area, no. We are, our projects are currently up north in the Sherman Dennison region.
Okay. So nothing convenient to look at?
Nothing right around the corner, no, sir.
Unless you want to take a ride on the way to Wind Star. Okay. Yeah, I think that's, you know, you're in the business, you understand that every faction of this business, you always want to get a referral, and sometimes the referral comes in the form of actually seeing projects that have been completed. And I think that's important, if we're going to even talk about it, to know what the quality of the products are that you're bringing. I'll tell you right up front, I'm not a big fan of the rezoning from the lots that we have out there. And Mayor Pro Tem, I don't want to go too far with my questioning, if there's another opportunity to chime back in after we hear some public comments?
Yes, there will be. So if you would like to hold further questioning, until then, we can certainly accommodate it.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and hold off then. Thank you, sir.
All right. I believe Councilmember Coons is next, and then Councilmember McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. That was my question, if we're going to have discussion later, then I'll save my comments.
All right.
And I have a real simple question, because you had in your presentation, you would raise the bar for the city's standards. So would you explain that to me, what you mean?
Yes, sir. In light of time here, I didn't include this slide as well. I actually have the slide over there that I can show you, just some comparable homes around, most of the homes in the area are older and not of the standard of the new homes that we hope to put in.
Okay. At this point, we're going to, sorry. Okay, sorry, Councilmember Coons, sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I did have one question. I guess y'all have done some studies on how many trees are actually out there?
Yes.
And what percentage of the trees, just with the houses themselves in that area, what percentage of the trees would you calculate would be lost?
A vast majority of the trees would have to be.
A vast majority of the trees would be lost? Okay. Because I know in your presentation, you talked about how this would improve green spaces. And then I saw a slide about tree mitigation, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you mind if I respond to that comment?
Go ahead.
In this slide, we had talked about adding significant green spaces to our project, not improving existing green spaces. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. Councilmember McNabb.
Sorry, I do have another question as well. You mentioned there was going to be a dog park. Who's in charge of maintaining the dog park?
Our current plan is to put an HOA in place to maintain the public spaces within our community, as well as the creek. I know after the rain, the creek is part of the water sheds. After the rain, that creek can fill up with debris, and that's something that the HOA would maintain as well.
Okay. So now, Councilmember, we noticed that you had your hand up. Are you still keeping it there as a placeholder until we go through the public comments? Oh.
Okay. Now that you mention it, I apologize for leaving that up, but I do have a question now, so I'll take it down, but I'll ask my question. Or I'll make my statement, really, is I just want everyone to be aware of that, and the attorney can advise us on this. Over my career, there were very few HOAs that remained intact for very long. I don't believe there's a way to make it mandatory and to be able to enforce it if those people in an HOA decide to disband. And I've been through a number of them where they did, within a few years after building. And so I don't want the mention of a HOA to make someone believe that they don't fade away, because it's not unusual for them to fade away. Again, I'm not trying to project anything negative about these people or this developer, but I do want to warn, when HOA is brought up as maybe another selling point, while we have some good HOAs in Duncanville, there's no doubt, most of them cease to exist. So that's my only comment for right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Contreras. And I think we're going to shift gears and go into the public hearing. And so we need a motion to open the public hearing?
You can go ahead and open the public hearing, as chair, if you'll announce the time of opening the public hearing.
All right. So at 8:00, we are going to open the public hearing. And we have comments that were submitted in writing, which I will read first. And then we have individuals in the audience who would like to speak to this. And so once I've finished reading... I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Councilmember.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, though.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just had a question, just a procedural question. So during the public hearing, if we want to ask, if someone makes comments during the public hearing, are we allowed to ask them follow-up questions?
It's up to the chair. It's up to the chair to allow exchange. The problem is, it's hard to keep track of time, unless we have a chess clock, like the federal judge does, so that we don't charge your question against their speaking time, or you have to allow for them to, excuse me, answer, or only count the time that they're actually answering your question towards their allotment. So it becomes difficult if you ask questions. I also understand it's difficult for you to sit here and remember after 20 minutes of comments, all your questions. So the chair does have discretion.
Okay. Can I offer this? Let's say, Councilmember Coons, you make note of your questions, and then after we've gone through each of the speakers that want to speak, then with the time that we have remaining, let's give you space so you can ask them questions.
If you don't do it that way, then you have to call them back up, and you actually end up taking more time. I might suggest the chair, allow the person to speak, allow them finish their comments, and then no time limit as to answering the questions of any of the council members.
All right. Very good. I think we've worked it out. Okay. So with that, I'll read the written comment that was submitted to the city secretary, and it's only one. And it's from Denise Nguyen, and the address is given as 247 Marybook Trail, Duncanville, Texas, 75116. And it reads, "Regarding a requested zoning change request on Caven Road, please," in all capital letters, "do not approve this zoning change request if..." That's in capitals. "The request is from an out-of-state developer who wants to put 40 houses on the three empty lots. That kind of development will bring unwanted traffic, noise, trash, and possibly crime with the increase in population. Please vote 'no.' Thanks." Denise Nguyen, 247 Marybrook Trail. So, that is the written comment. And now, we have citizens' comment. And the first card that I have is from Jay Hunter. And so, Mr. Hunter, if you're present, please come forward and state your name and your address for the record, and give us your comment.
Good evening. My name is Jay Hunter. I live at 719 Holiday Lane, which is the south end of this developed project. Our back fence would border the project just north of our property. And I've been there for... since the late 1980s and enjoyed the property very much with all its serenity and all the trees that were mentioned earlier. Earlier, they were talking about keeping Duncanville beautiful and protecting the nature, the greenery. If you don't touch anything back there, it states exactly that. There's some very large trees there. They're very old. They support the local ecosystem there. There's a lot of squirrels, a lot of birds, migratory birds, songbirds, owls. There's a hawk that comes in from out there and kills some of the birds that I feed in the backyard. So, there's a bird of prey back there. So, I don't know what the federal laws are protecting that area. And also, if you were to drive from Camp Wisdom up Cockroer Hill, there's a rise, and if you turn left, it's Sun Valley. And that's the entrance into our property, and that's at the top of the hill. So, from Sun Valley north, all the water drains there. So, there's a lot of topsoil that's been preserved and caught by the vegetation and the trees, all the way from Sun Valley into that area down to the creek that washes through there. So, I don't... The soil's very thin. So, like, right past our house, there's a lot of limestone rocks that come out because the erosion of rain clears that out. But all the erosion from Sun Valley to the north is caught by all those trees and the roots and all the vegetation there. And we don't have a flooding problem in that area because of the natural environment. So, if you were to take down those trees, bulldoze the trees, the vegetation, level that off for roads, asphalt, driveways, sidewalks... You know, I don't think anybody's invented cement or pavement or asphalt. It's water-absorbing. So, I think there's going to be a huge flooding issue down into the creek in that area, all the way to Cockroer Hill Road, which on the other side of Cockroer Hill Road is Dallas, to best I understand. So, if we have a lot of that vegetation cleared out there and availability to trap the water and protect the topsoil from eroding on down in there, if all that's taken away, there might be some interesting flooding problems, you know, from, what, Main Street, Oriole, into Chris Paris Park, and then on into Cockroer Hill. And I don't know what's going to happen on the other side of Dallas if all that's leveled off, because right now, it's protected drainage by the local ecosystem that exists there now. So, that's a big concern of mine. Plus, all the huge trees in there. The biggest trees capture the most carbon to put wood on the outside of each tree to make them bigger in diameter. So, they put a lot of wood on every year with the rings, the tree rings that they add on. And also, the... You know, there's the... Talking about replanting a lot of trees in Dallas because so many have been destroyed by farms or storms, excuse me. So, right now, if you don't touch any of those trees that are there, they're protecting the local environment. They're protecting that watershed and protecting from flooding. And, you know, if you don't touch it, you don't have any of these other problems that they're worried about. And, you know, they've got other projects up near the Red River, but they don't live where I live and enjoy the local environment and the nature that exists there now. And you won't have... if you don't touch any of it, none of that goes away, and it's preserved. So, that's what I worry about. And also, I've seen migratory owls come through there, migratory birds, songbirds. And I, you know, if all those trees are taken out of there, that's really good. And it's a small pocket, you know, of big trees. And then, when you get down towards the creek and on the other side, you get into the junipers and the cedars. And it's a different environment in that little, small area between... Is it Caven? Is that the proper pronunciation, Caven? So, you get the... You get that little microenvironment in there that's protecting a lot of wildlife and protecting the flooding. And all these people who want to change it don't live in this area. And they don't understand what's there and what's going on at the moment. So, you know, that's what I'm concerned about, so...
Okay.
Is anyone here actually looked at the property and knows what's there as it exists now? Have been there and seen it firsthand, just out of curiosity? You have? Have you... Do you live in the area, or you just wanted to see for yourself?
Mayor Protem, you can't have this exchange back. You're supposed to speak for or against it. Tell us what... tell them what you want them to do.
Okay.
And then, if they got questions, I'll ask you questions. But you're not supposed to ask them questions.
Okay. That's fine.
Point of order.
I just wanted to... If you haven't seen it for yourself, I wish you would see it for yourself, you know, and to decide for yourself and see what's back there before it's taken away. Because once the big trees are gone, you know, some of those are... Those trees have been there as long as I've been there, for 30 years. And who knows how long they were there before then? So, we're talking 50 to 100 years to replace them at that time. So, that's a big deal. They were talking about tree mitigation and the cost of removing them. But you know, there's more than just the trees. It's the roots that hold all that environment together, protect the flooding. You don't hear about flooding issues there as of now. And I think that's one of the reasons why, is that all the vegetation back there is protecting it. So, I don't know what will happen if you level that off, pave it, put asphalt up, parking lots, driveways, sidewalks, streets. And what will that do to Dallas? Do they know about it?
Mayor Protem, are you for it or against it? Yes, for it?
I'm against the development.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next speaker. I will say, and again, I apologize for the choppiness of this process. But what we are doing is, we're hearing from both sides, for or against. And so, this gentleman has begun the process of speaking against it. I have two cards in my hand from Christine Park Rosales and Michael Rosales, both of whom reside at 710 Caven Road, who both say, "I do not wish to speak, but please record my opposition." So, those are two more in opposition. Now, the last person who wants to speak in opposition, I believe, is Jonathan Gable, and would like to speak in opposition to it. And how much time do we have left?
3 minutes and 7 seconds.
3 minutes, 7 seconds. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Jonathan Gable. I live on the street of Caven Road, 602 Caven Road. I want to thank you for your time. I'll try and make it brief. Yes, I live right here on the edge. These are the three that you guys... lots of you guys have been looking at, and I'm right here. And so, there is a creek that goes through my backyard. You saw it on the picture. That creek goes down into this area that's going to be developed. I do have concerns that that would back up and flood back into my property if that drainage is not properly handled. This is a very narrow street. I would like to ask that that be considered with this kind of a development, with potentially 40 homes, 42 homes, three cars per house. There's 126 cars in this narrow street. I don't know if you guys have any plans to widen the street, add sidewalks to the street, or improve the street of Caven Road to accommodate this and make this more safe for a development like this. But I have a deep concern that 40 houses in such a small area is going to... what that's going to do to just the local environment for us is noise pollution and traffic and safety. I think it's excessive to put that many homes in such a tiny space, to be honest. So, those are my concerns. And I'll yield my time for somebody else if we have more time. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Appreciate it. Now, I have two more cards of individuals that wanted to speak, but they did not indicate whether they were for or against. So, I tell you what I'll do for the sake of time. For the sake of time. I will... Okay. So, then Elizabeth Gable and Shannon Gable. Very good. Okay. And now, we have Rosa Quintanilla. Okay. And does not wish to speak, but please record my opposition. So, that concludes all of those who were opposed. I have... Oh. Okay. And let me interrupt you for a second. You are... your name and your...
Ma'am, can you come up to the microphone? Dana Nichols, 702 Woodhaven Boulevard, Duncanville, Texas. One of the old parts of Duncanville that he kind of overlooks. And, well, the code does, too, our city council, because we have a source at the main in Woodhaven that we've complained about for years. Nothing's done. There's a stop sign on Godwin in Woodhaven that was the answer by the city council of our complaint of racing. That was in the 90s. And so, they put the stop sign at Godwin Woodhaven, which Godwin dead ends in Woodhaven, so they went to stop anyway. And the racing is finished by the time they get there. So, it's just a... But anyway, they have it not.
Mayor Protem, point of order.
Really pay attention to the old part of Duncanville.
Mayor Protem, point of order. We need to know a designation.
Oh. Are you for or against?
I'm against.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Nobody knows the results of that flood zone of the creek. Kids playing it all the time.
All right.
I've lived there since 1972. And it's an early playground. And the last meeting, I was rather misled, I think. I understood there were going to be like five houses on each tract for a total of 10 houses. And then, I start reading, and there's going to be 42 or 43 plus four display homes, plus a golf course, a pet park, playgrounds. Yeah, I don't see it. That's going to be such a drain on Duncanville that I don't think that our resources can handle it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We understand.
And nobody wants an HOA.
All right. Let's do it. We did it. Okay. So, what I want to do now is to close the public hearing.
Mayor Protem, we need to do in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody want to speak in favor? Okay. That's why I mentioned that.
We have the developer back there is raising his hand.
Oh.
Just speak in favor.
Come up. Come up. Come up. Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. Plus, he's going to have time anyway with councilmembers' questions. So, just sit still for a minute.
It's just for the public to get their questions to you, so you know what their concerns are. He's certainly entitled to be called back to the dais as the applicant to discuss comments that the council makes. And he got to make his presentation, which was well in excess of 10 minutes.
All right. Okay. Thanks a lot. So, now, we're going to close the public hearing at 8:44.
Mayor Protem Harvey, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All right. So, let's vote.
Mr. Contreras, can you turn on your mic? Are you for or against closing the public hearing?
For.
Thank you.
Okay. So, with that, now, we're going to turn to councilmembers' questions. And I'm going to allow Councilmember Contreras to go first.
Councilmember Contreras, your mic is muted.
All right. How's that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for the time. I'm going to start by... I don't know if we have an exact count of the number of letters that we received before. I think we had six, and all in opposition. And some total of those that spoke tonight in opposition, but not including those that had sent in a letter as well. Does anybody have an account at this point?
If I may.
Go ahead.
Yes. We had 112 letters that were sent out, and six that came back in opposition, as of today.
Right. Okay. So, I've got the six count. But what about tonight? We had a few that didn't send letters in. They just spoke in opposition. Some had sent letters in and spoke in opposition, but others didn't. Do we get a feel for how many of those?
I would say, Councilmember Contreras, it appears to be about eight.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. My experience... Well, first, I'll start by saying that when we set our zoning in place, we set it in for a reason. And there's been a lot of study that's gone into our zoning. So, when we take on a type of zoning change that significantly changes from what it was, sometimes our zoning just changes an aspect of it. Sometimes it changes it in its entirety. And I think personally, as a councilperson, I think I have to be very, very cautious in taking that big step. Because what does a big step mean? Well, in a big step like this, you have people that have reason to believe that they are going to live in an area where, when it develops, will develop to similar type housing. And that's kind of a safety and a sanctity for people to have that belief based on the council's decision to provide zoning. So, when we change it to a large extent, which this is, it changes the whole dynamics of that neighborhood. It has a potential to, in many ways. Not to mention, I don't know how it really impacts property values. If we look just to the north of that district, and I realize not many people have cause to drive on Caven or Woodhaven or East Redbird Lane, but not many citizens in Duncanville have reasons to go up that way. So, that's why I'm telling my story about that, because as a longtime code enforcement building official, I experienced visiting with those folks, sometimes not for good reasons. But I got a sense of what that area is. And it's very different than other areas of Duncanville. And I've mentioned this before in another conversation we've had, that on Woodhaven, anybody that was familiar with it 25 years ago realized it was nothing but a bunch of little original shotgun houses mixed with a few... bunch of little original shotgun houses mixed with a few ranch houses that were probably built in the sixties or seventies, but some of those houses date back to the fifties, and they're nine hundred square foot or so. Caven isn't too different than that, except there is this area here that hasn't been built on, and maybe there was a house on one of them at one time. But nonetheless, we've seen what's happened on Woodhaven. Woodhaven has had, in the last twenty years, a surge in beautiful homes that are being built on those same lots, same configuration as what we're discussing here. I took a rough count, and there's probably close to twenty-five houses that have been built on Woodhaven. In amongst the little nineteen fifty's shacks that are out there, that are not kept up very well, but they built these, sixteen of them, this is on Woodhaven in Duncanville, just north of Caven. Sixteen of them are valued at over three hundred thousand dollars. Four of them are valued at over four hundred thousand, and two of them exceed five hundred thousand. It's shocking what people invested up there. They took their hard-earned money and they invested it in an area many people wouldn't have thought to build in. Caven has the same potential that as Woodhaven fills up, since they're similar in age and looks, I think there's opportunities down there for that type of housing to develop. And I would prefer that type of housing to develop. But if this goes through, I think that's a foregone conclusion, because building, building those types of houses at the entryway of forty-two house subdivision may not be that attractive to that person that might have been otherwise willing to build houses on there. So that's just, that's my personal view, based on my experience. And secondly, and I'll be brief about this, and again, I don't want to disparage the good name of these folks, they may be very good builders. I'd love to see some of the projects that they've done. As an ex-builder, not a developer, I know that's what you have to do, you have to see what the products are, because you don't want to get shocked and find out there's not a good product. And we haven't been able to do that. And it's geographical situation, they're not trying to hide anything, but I think that'd be a good idea for somebody to see what they've done. But more importantly to me is in Duncanville, my experience again, is that these standalone projects like this, I haven't fared well. And there's quite a number of them around town. There's one just right down the street, if you drive down to Fairwood, it's a street that is right before you get to Wren, which is the southernmost street that comes out on Duncanville Road in Fair Meadows. And that, that is this in early days. And that street is fraught with crime, feuds between neighbors, the, it turned into rental properties pretty quickly after it was built. People just real quick to get out, probably found, you know, a need to get bigger houses. And the parking on the street is horrendous. We tow a lot of vehicles on those streets for illegal parking, for lack of parking. When you have houses that have twenty-foot driveways, think about that, these trucks today are probably pushing twenty-four, twenty-five feet. They don't, they don't fit in a driveway like that, they don't fit in the garage either. And so that means that there's going to be a lot of street parking as a result of that with a twenty-foot right away. That means the front of that house can't be built closer than twenty feet to the public right away. So, having said that, Santa Fe Village down on the south of Daniel Day would be another example of a similar type of development. It was a good thought, but it never really panned out, and they became rental properties almost exclusively. So, so my personal experience with these, and the city's personal experience with these have been that they've not really fulfilled what the original dream was. And to take that chance and change, make a major zoning change in a residential neighborhood that has some potential to eventually have homes, average-sized homes built on these lots, they're desirable lots, I'm more of the mindset that I want to avoid the chance that this would take away opportunities for other building opportunities, and also that it would develop into something that we didn't, we can't anticipate right now. So, with that, I'm just going to close my statements and tell you, I wouldn't be able to support this decision to approve this request. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Contreras. Councilmember Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I think this question is for Mr. Tennant. So the zoning ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, it says that the minimum acreage for a planned development is fifteen acres, right?
I believe so. Hold on one second, let me confirm that.
Bear with me one second, sir, I'm better with my computer than I am in the book, so...
But please answer, if you have any more questions, you can ask those as I look forward.
Well, what I have to say after follows whether or not that's true. Okay, got you. Let me expedite my search to...
Page nineteen.
Page nineteen, thank you.
I'm sorry, ninety-four, we are looking at the computer. Page five, I need to know what it is.
Yes, two, three, yes, B two-three.
That's accurate, sir.
So, minimum net acreage for a planned development, fifteen acres.
Uh huh. Unless a specific finding by the city council that the establishment of the district is required to implement the comprehensive plan. So you guys have the authority as a council to basically take the fifteen as a guideline?
Could you reread the second part a little bit slower about the comprehensive plan?
Sorry about that. All right, so the minimum net acreage for a P.D., planned development, district request shall be fifteen acres unless a specific finding is made by the city council that the establishment of the district is required to implement the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so, first of all, this proposed development is a little over eight acres, right? So, little over half of what's required.
Under half, yes, sir.
Right, unless we see a necessity in the comprehensive plan that might necessitate, you know, make, changing that, accommodating it. And in our comprehensive plan, I didn't realize this, says a subject property has a future land use designation of parks and open space. And when the citizen was making the comments about that, because I have gone out to see that property, and it does seem, I can understand why, I'm not sure when that was decided by whatever council that that would, they would have that vision for that property, I can understand why they would make that designation if you go out and look at that property. And I am very concerned about the environmental impact. And the developer said that a vast majority of the trees would be lost, and we're not sure about the impact on, as far as the flood plain, and yes, the impact on the properties that are down of that, that area. And so, and based on just what the comprehensive plan states about that area, and, you know, the comments that have been made by citizens, I feel like, and this isn't for discussion tonight, of course, but before I could approve anything on this property, that we would have to review the zoning ordinance, and to make sure that the zoning ordinance is consistent with our vision for the land use. So, I will be in opposition to this. Thank you.
Councilmember McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Harvey. And like Mr. Contreras and Mr. Coontz, I feel the same direction, and I will be opposed to this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey Pro Tem. I agree right now with not having, with so much ambiguity and not having answers to some of the questions as far as flood zones and et cetera. I oppose it this time.
Okay, so with that, the chair will...
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Harvey, I would, this is one of those cases where, again, I'm going to make a positive motion that's going to have a negative vote. So I want to make sure that you understood it as well as the city attorney. So I am going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, so, thank you, oh, second.
We need a second.
We need a second.
Second.
Okay, very good. So, so let's see if I can explain this correctly. So we have a motion on the floor to approve in a second, and so if any of us are against this, we should vote no.
Correct.
If you vote yes, you're in favor of this.
Correct.
Okay, so I hope I made that clear as mud. So...
If you like it, yes, if you don't like it, no.
All right.
And we're going to start with Councilmember Contreras. Are you for or against?
Against.
All right, you're going to do the rest electronically?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, green, yes, red, no.
Okay, okay, very good. It is not approved. And so will somebody call back the mayor, please?
I will, no.
I have Mayor Gordon returning at nine oh two P.M.
Consider resolution approving the allocation for an ambulance, additional funds for small business grants, and outdoor fitness equipment from the American Rescue Plan Act funding for coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in accordance with U.S. Department of Treasury guidelines. Chief Innovation Officer Odie. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. So I wanted to take you back and kind of just give you a quick recap of what the ARPA funds are and what their intended uses are for. So, again, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in March of twenty twenty-one. Duncanville is to receive nine point six million dollars from that funding. We've already received the first payment of four point eight million back in August of twenty-one, and we should be receiving our second payment of four point eight million in August of this year. The purposes of these funds are to spend for mitigation responses to address the continuing recovery of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, as well as employee premium pay, replacing lost revenue that would have occurred during that time, and as well as investing in infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband. We came to you earlier this year in January, February, and asked for some, we had some project ideas and asked for allocations. Just wanted to give you a status of where these projects are currently. We had requested one point three for employee premium pay. That project is complete, we have paid that out. We've requested three hundred and fifty thousand for small business grants. The status of that right now is, we have received sixty-plus applications. The Economic Development Department is leading that, that project, and they are currently in the review and approving process of that. We requested one point six million for facility generators, emergency generators, ventilation improvement, HVAC. And right now, we are getting quotes for the one oh three East Wheatland Building, we're getting quotes for the Fieldhouse Building, they're working with Train to spec out what that improvement would look like, as well as getting the generators specced out. It takes some time, unfortunately, doesn't, it's not a quick project, because we have to spec out the buildings and what's going to be specific, and what our needs specifically are for each building. We requested seventy thousand for a digital literacy program with the library, as well as a youth leadership program. The note I have here is that we're going to revisit these programs, we're going to establish what the program will look like for the library, as well as if the youth leadership program will, will continue to happen. And then we had some other smaller needs, other public safety needs, such as body cam vests for our code enforcement officers, adverse weather backup equipment for the fire department, units for the, to speak to our SCADA system, which has to do with our water, water system, how it monitors water demand and usage. So that is the current project status of the funds we've already, you know, had requested. The additional requests that we have at this time, we'd like to purchase an ambulance, the approximate cost of that is three hundred and seventy-six thousand. We need to purchase two ambulances at this time. One will be purchased with our fleet rotation fund, and the other, we'd like to use the ARPA funds for. We can buy this in bulk and get a good discount, so we need to commit to, to the vendor for that, to get that discount. The second item is, we would like additional funding for, for some more small business grants. Once those applications are funded and given to the grants that have already applied, we know that the word's going to get out, and we could possibly help more businesses. So we'd like to allocate further funding for that. And then lastly, we'd like to put up some outdoor fitness equipment. We'd like to install approximately twenty-three units within Armstrong, Lyons, and Redbird Park. Each unit costs approximately thirteen to fifteen thousand installed, and so that equates to about twenty-three units. Our parks are heavily utilized, and I know those, those outdoor fitness equipment would get great use from our public. These are just some pictures of what that outdoor equipment would look like. So again, we've already received the first payment of four point eight million. The current allocation amount that we had previously requested was three point seven million, so that leaves, the additional funds that we are requesting is one point seven five, so the remaining amount that we have left for, in that first payment is nine thousand. And again, we'll get that second payment in August of this year. If you all have any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Odie. Going back to the small business grants, what was the cap established on those?
I believe we had capped that at fifteen thousand, would be the most that is paid out, but there is quite a process of, you know, depending on the paperwork they submit and what they, what we give them ultimately, but fifteen thousand is the cap that we would pay out.
Right now, what we're doing is we're trying to, based on such a high level of request, we were going back and forth whether do you cut the amount to do more, and that's why they're asking for the additional three fifty, so that with sixty actual applicants, we will be able to address larger. And so we're basing it on a number of factors to include how much revenue the businesses are bringing in. And so, we haven't identified the exact amount, it's going to, the ultimate decision will be based on the total amount we have available for the businesses.
Follow-on question with the additional generators for fire and... Follow-on question with the additional generators for fire and police. No money has been spent yet. I guess the specification just building developed for that, so.
Yes, this is a slow process.
Are we gonna be in, are those gonna be in place for the next winter storm?
I certainly hope so. But there, obviously, like everything else, we've, vehicles and things like that, there is a kind of a long turnaround time, 12 months. Can't just go down to Home Depot and buy the generator that we need. So there's some specifics in design and work and.
We've started the process. Just as we decided to do backup generators, so did every city, basically in the United States. And so TEO has been working with our team to make sure that we get the right one, but also getting our orders. But everyone is doing pretty much the same thing, looking for generators right now.
Yeah, I, 'cause I have some personal experience with another organization. We ordered a major chiller, and it took nine and a half months from the time we specced it to the time it arrived. So looking at the timeframe for everything, I think has changed in terms of procurement, the installation for everything that we do as a city. So taking that into consideration.
And then just if I make a point, for the funding, we do have to obligate the funding by the end of '24. And have it spent by the end of 2026.
Right. Mr. Coontz.
Thank you, mayor. So first of all, I'm pleased to hear that we have so many applicants for the, because my understanding is that we went through a similar process before. There weren't very many applicants for those grants. So I'm glad to hear that so many people are coming that we need to get some more money out there. So I was just wanting to ask, will we ever get to see which, you know, what kind of businesses are getting approved for these?
Yes, sir. They will do a full presentation on it, and what we will do is we will bring the entire list back to you. We just didn't want to make any decisions until we, well, until they were able to identify if they were gonna get additional funding. Like I said, the, we did a lot more, we, we changed our requirements, and we looked at what kept people from responding before, and that's been part of where we see a larger applicant pool. And so, yes, that list exists right now. The amounts that they're recommending did not, because we wanted to wait to find out if this was approved. But what I will commit to you is if this does happen, we will bring this to you at the next council meeting.
Thank you. And then, mayor, I do have another comment, but I'll wait until after all the other councilmen have made their comments.
Go ahead.
No, I'd wait until after everyone else has made comments.
Oh, okay. Mr. Harvey.
Okay, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm very excited that the successful pilot program that was established at Pyburn Park to place fitness equipment there, I'm glad we have an opportunity to replicate that to other parks in the city. I, I know we have been doing a lot of talking about having a healthier city, and it's good to see that we are finally making steps towards making that a reality.
Thank you. Mr. Contreras.
Well, I just wanna spin off of the councilman's comments there, that seeing that equipment out there at Pyburn Park, which I just saw last week for the first time, it excites me for people going to Redbird Park up here, that they may have the same opportunities to use that equipment. It looks very solidly built, and it looks functional, very functional, and I, I just, I imagine we're gonna get a lot of use out of it in each one of these parts if we install it. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. Going back to Mr. Coontz.
Never mind.
Okay. All right, council, we have before us a resolution. Is there a motion to approve? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Councilmember McNabb Burnett, second by Mayor Protim Harvey. Council, please vote. Oh, yep. Mr. Contreras.
Vote for.
And I want to see your hand, too. Let me see your hand. Yep, there you go. All right. It's not that I don't trust you, William Tell, but it's okay. All right, we have unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 5C, consider a resolution approving the guaranteed maximum price per N's GMP. Amendment to terms and conditions of the standard form agreement, RFQ number 19-026, with Core Construction Services of Texas Incorporated, and the proposed amount of $7,591,908 to provide for the construction of new fire station number one. Chief Rodi, floor is yours, sir, and with Ms. Colton.
Thank you very much, mayor. Good evening to mayor, and our city council, and of course, our city manager. Tonight, we're gonna talk about GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price. That's gonna be our main focus tonight on the fire station. Just in a review, if you all remember, our fire station is down at 323 West Camp Wisdom. That fire station's been there since 1966. That being the case, it's 56 years, it's 56 years old. So when the, 2018, they decided to go ahead and do a facilities condition assessment study, and they found that that fire station needed to be replaced. But there's some justification why we need that fire station to be replaced. The major one is, is that with the modern fire service, our apparatus are getting larger, they're getting longer, and what we found was these apparatus will not fit in the bays up there at station one. They're too long, and they're too tall, our quints especially. We can get our pumpers in there currently, but through strategic, strategic planning, we would like to put our quints up there on that, in, north end of town, just because of the, the buildings and structures that are up there on that north end. So that's kinda conducive to our, our strategic plan. So that's why we would like to have something bigger to put our fire apparatus in, so they can be housed better. Also, one of the issues we have that fire station is, if we have a female firefighter come to our ranks, then that station was not built for a female firefighter. Back in 1966, it was very rare to find female firefighters. Now, it's, it's pretty common, and we're, we're looking down the road, down the future, to try to accommodate when we do hire a female firefighter. The shower facilities in there are not real adequate for both male and females, especially since nowadays, we're trying to cut down on the cancer issues in the fire service. So when we go on a structured fire, we require guys to go in and take a full shower and get, get all the hazards that they've got on their skin off, and, and so that they can live a good, long, healthy life. Also, the ADA laws didn't come into effect until 1990, so being that fire station was built in 1966, it didn't follow any of the ADA rules. So there's no fire alarm system in that facility, and there's no sprinkler system in that, in that facility either. And back to the cancer stuff, we, the apparatus bays lack the support to be, go over there and clean our storage of our protective gear. That protective gear, once it gets into a hazardous environment, will continue to off gas. So we need to clean facilities to clean that gear, and then, and then to dry that gear properly to protect our firefighter employees. So with that being said, Jackie, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, distinguished members of the Duncanville City Council, the city manager, city attorney, city secretary, and our guest. I am Jackie Colton. I'm the interim manager, the interim director of the fireworks department. Before I get started with my presentation, we do have individuals here from Core Construction, and I would like to introduce them, and, and also BRW Architects. They are the ones who designed our, our fire station. So with that, we have Stephen Hill, we have Corey, Dorat, and then we have Kobe Lawson with, with Core. Okay, so a lot of the information that I will be sharing with you this evening, okay, thank you, a lot of the information that I'll be sharing with you this evening is just a recap. You've, you've seen it before, and you've lived it, because you have been involved in this process. So before you is the timeline for this project. We're starting in November of 2018, when the voters of this city approve Proposition C for $6 million for firefighting facilities. Next, the council authorized a sellabond, and then Core was selected as our construction, construction manager at risk for this project. Then, in early 2020, something monumental happened, and that's when the COVID-19 pandemic hit. And the reason why I'm bringing that up now is because it has had a significant impact on cost and schedule, not only on this project, but other projects, and not only for the city of Duncanville, but for all entities, you know, across the U.S. and across the world. Okay, so in March of 2020, we did hire the architect, and throughout this process, we have briefed council on budget, on floor plans, on building facades. And the city council actually approved as our building facade in May of 2021. And then we went into final design, with that being completed in March of 2022, and then the project was bid by Core. So this is the schedule. Should you all, GMP on this evening? The notice to proceed will be June the 21st, with procurement starting directly after that. Some of the items to be supplied under this project, such as certain electrical components, have a long lead time, just like we talked about the generators earlier. Some of the components of this project have a long lead time. So the intent is to jump into procurement early on, so that it will be available when the time comes to actually install it. So construction is slated to occur the 1st of September, and during September sometime, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony for, you know, to, to celebrate this significant achievement, and we will be, we'll have to determine the date at, once everything is settled and everything, and send out invitations. And then the construction will be completed around October. Substantial completion, according to the current schedule, is September of next year. And so final construction is to be completed within 30 days of that. Okay, so this is the floor plan and a rendering of the building facade of the project as bid. Okay, so let's talk about the GMP. What does that mean? So it's actually the guaranteed maximum price for the construction job. Should the city not make any changes in scope, this is the amount that we will pay regardless of any escalations in cost. And so those costs would have to be met by Core. And so there are certain elements of this project, which we did not include in order to contain the costs, and such as furniture. Furniture is not a part of this, certain equipment items are not a part of this contract, and then certain IT items, and the generator. Okay, so this is the guaranteed maximum price. Total amount is $7.591 million. And there's everything from demolition to equipment, to the contractor's fee that's involved in this project, as well as insurance bonds and builder's risk. Okay, so starting out, we had allocated $6 million in bond funds for land acquisition and construction of this job. Council was briefed in December of 2020, and that estimate had grown to 6.8. So currently, the revised estimate is $9.3 million. So there is a difference in the amount of bond funding available versus the cost of this job. So some of the things that have occurred, actually, some of the things have, that have occurred, and I actually have a whole nother slide for that, so I'll reserve those comments until a little later. But the design is more than we anticipated initially, because within the architect's contract, there was a provision that would provide for additional fees in the event the GMP exceeded 4.5 million, which was our initial estimate. And then in addition, there, there has been, we talked about the, the GMP difference, and I'll get into more details about that later. So we kinda looked at the cost of our fire station relative to some of the other fire stations, which were recently built, and so we're, we're right in line, just as a check. Okay, so this is where we talk about the factors impacting the increased pricing for the job. As was mentioned, you know, COVID has had an impact that has caused shortage in labor, which has caused labor to be more expensive, which also has caused, like, the price of goods and materials to escalate rapidly. It's a very volatile situation currently. And then add to that, we've had increased fuel cost, and we've had staffing changes here at Duncanville that have impacted the cost and the, the schedule for the fire station construction job. Okay.
Okay. So as we have been looking at this, and Ms. Adina is at the GFOA conference this week, one of our concerns is, so how do we pay, and where are we gonna come up with the funding? As we just presented our audit, we talked about fund balance, but we realized that there are a number of options that we need to explore. And what we're not prepared to do today is to go into detail. We would like to, we've been meeting with our financial advisors and talking with them about, and they've given us some scenarios on possibly financing through either certificate of occupancy or tax anticipation notes, as well as a combination of fund balance, grants, and other opportunities. And so our proposal is, from this, is to come back to you in a special meeting, or a special portion of our next meeting, with our fund advisor, our financial advisor here, as well as our finance director, to talk about how we can cover the additional costs that we are looking at within this. And that's based on the fact, and just one of the things she had here is, I believe I sent this out to council also, on April 4th, 2022, the city of Waukesha Hatchie is faced with a similar. Their fire station is coming in about $3.65 million more for construction. And so one of the reasons why we're looking for this confirmation today goes back to the fact that, as we had this conversation several months ago, it was much less. And so the guaranteed maximum price means that this is the most we will pay. Now, could it go down? Possibly, but it could also go up, as we've seen it happen. And so we are looking at, and we have a 30-day window to lock in a price, and so that is why we're before you today. There are construction companies that I followed up with, and some of them are only doing two-week guarantees. If you don't accept their price in two weeks, they can't. And so it is not locked in until we approve and sign it. And so I believe that our request for you today is approval of a resolution approving the guaranteed maximum price. This is a standard form agreement, which we would do, that would be at 7,5, $7,591,908 for the construction of the fire station. And so basically, the options are, we approve it, council doesn't approve it, or other options as determined by council. options as determined by council. But until this is approved, that price can change at any time.
So putting on the hat of CORE, was the, knowing what this total is in terms of our shortfall and what we're going to have the budget for, that additional $3.3 million, how does CORE as a, as a business prepare itself for the possibility of this GM, this guaranteed maximum price being exceeded?
So we have included-
Pick the mic up so we can hear you.
We have included an escalation allowance in, as part of this GMP. So usually, we assume about 1.5% a month, which is pretty standard. And if you look at the GMP increase from March of 2020 to now, and you take 1.5% a month, it's pretty close to where we ended up.
So, City Attorney, I know that there's been times when I've asked a question, you said, "I better stop asking that." That's okay. City Attorney, when we get into some of these things, I sometimes begin to get into issues where I'm not supposed to go, into financial matters, and you stop me. So I'm appealing to you at this moment to see if I'm going to ask something that I'm not permitted to go for, please interrupt and say I can't ask a particular question because what I'm looking for is that, looking at it from their side, and how, knowing that we're running a 7.5% inflation right now, and what things are happening in the shortages of labor and so forth, the preparation of coming forward with this proposal to our city council tonight is basically, we are handcuffing them to a price, providing, of course, as Ms. Colton said, providing we make no changes. And so that's something we really have to stick to. Whatever the specifications are, however this has been drawn for the architects at this point, that is how this guy is going to go forward. We can't change this puppy if we're going to stick with this GM, guaranteed maximum price. So that's a caution to us as a council to understand how this cap is going to be reflected and how we can budget for it. It's not our issue tonight, as was clearly stated by city manager, it's not our issue tonight to figure out where this shortfall comes from, other than the fact we now are going to accept, hopefully, a decision by council that this guaranteed maximum price is going to go into effect, and that the partners in this construction project are going to be able to fulfill their obligations under this guaranteed maximum price. I guess that's my concern. I just want a warm, comfortable feeling that CORE and the architects and CMAR, we're all on the same page here, that as we move forward, that this GMP is going to remain in effect, we as a city are not going to make any changes to the specs, and this is a livable partnership in terms of the finances. I guess that's where I'm going.
Mayor, this is the first time you've used this kind of product. You normally bid these kind of projects, and that's why you do this, is you lock the contractor into a price. And I know about CORE, but if you're going to put on your big boy pants, then come to the table and give me your number and ask you to approve it, and a contract's contract.
All right, and that's what I see, this is a high-risk partnership because nobody is really going to be able to understand what's going to happen to our economy for the next year.
My only thing, while I'm not a proponent for CORE, a lot of my clients use CORE, and they've been very happy with their work. And I know they've built almost every high school in Frisco, and that's been a daunting, they've gone from two high schools 18 years ago, now they have 11. So, and they use this kind of product, so they have experience. I am personally familiar with experience with them, with the GM, CMAR contract, and so I assume they know what they're doing.
Okay. Mr. McNabb?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my first question is either for the city manager or director of public works. This is just the building. It doesn't include the land costs or anything on it?
Let's go back to the other part of the budget. There we go. There. So what you see on this one is the total amount from the design, which was the architectural 750, the CMR is pre-construction 20,000, the construction CMR, the contract manager at risk, that's what this portion is, land acquisition. We initially, we budgeted a million, as many of us remember, we thought we may have been able to have some savings, and as most of us are aware, that we came as close to spending a million on land as possible. And so that was one that we hoped to have savings within, but that was not the case.
I'm just going to make the, well, for the gentlemen that are here tonight as well, you did the Grand Prairie Fire Station?
Yes.
Okay, where'd that come in at?
The Grand Prairie Fire Station is approximately 9 million.
Could you use the microphone, please, sir?
Yeah. I believe you're inquiring about Grand Prairie Fire Station 3.
Yes, sir.
It was a hair under 9 million upon completion, bid nearly two years ago, and it has a training facility as well. The Duncanville Fire Station has an EOC in addition to just a fire station, so there's some similarities.
So the size of the Grand Prairie Fire, just the fire station alone versus our fire station, are they similar in size?
They're substantially similar, Grand Prairie is slightly larger.
Okay. And then it came in at 9 million?
Yeah, the complete construction at the end, I think the original GMP was around 88.
Okay, and that doesn't include the training center?
Yes, they've got a training classroom and offices for their training staff.
Okay, okay, I follow you. My simple comment's going to be that this, we just need to go ahead and do this. Yes, this is costing more, but the other costs are only going to go up, and so we just need to lock in.
Councilmember Contreras has his hand up.
Mr. Contreras.
Well, just a quick question for the gentleman that was just answering Councilman McNabb's question. Did he see similar price increases during the construction of this Grand Prairie Fire Department?
Yes, we did have, it's a higher escalation rate than the typical during that period, but the escalation is much higher, as CORE explained, since COVID arrived. We're seeing a period right now of really the highest construction cost escalation that I've seen in my career. Part of that is driven by inflation in the US dollars, and I'm sure that CORE could give you a much, you know, more detailed rundown. In some materials, just from availability, we've seen increases of 25% in the last year. Of course, that's not across the border, you'd have that level of escalation in the total cost. And CORE has kept it to around 11% since we looked at about a year ago, which is a pretty good job because the general market, we've seen be around 15.
Thank you.
Mr. Count.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an idea, but I'd just like for somebody to confirm what's in my head, what kind of scenario do we face if we don't approve this GMP tonight? If we don't approve it?
If you do not approve it and we do not accept this, basically, we wait to see what happens with the economy. And it could go up, it could go down. I can say, for example, cities who started, when we sold our bonds, if you look at our timeline, if we would have been able to move a little bit faster and it started this process back then, we would not be at this price. But the same thing can be said as far as, I hate to use, my former city who's building a fire police station right now, they're building about the same plus 30,000 square feet for this amount. It's just timing. And everyone I've talked to, the hope for all of us is that it may go down, but right now, there is no indication that anything is going to go down. It is going to escalate. And so where we're looking at 3 million, that 3 million could easily turn to 4 million. When we started this conversation, I believe when I first got here, we were looking at a small fraction of an amount of a difference, and I think we were just at about $1 million. And that million has, within a year of me being here, turned to 3 million.
And so I just, I just want to agree with Councilmember McNabb, is, you know, hoping for better circumstances, may not, probably not going to pan out well for us if we look at the trends. And I want to say that, I believe I heard the fire chief say that they don't have a fire alarm or even a sprinkler system at the fire station. And I took a tour of that fire station once, and our firefighters deserve a lot better. And I think we need to go ahead and approve this.
Thank you. Any further comments from council?
I'll make the motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabb.
Second.
Second, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. Council, please vote.
Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Contreras.
Four.
There we go. Need unanimous approval. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much.
And as I said, this is a partnership in terms of where we're going with this, so I don't look at this as just a resolution, but knowing that to bring this structure to fruition, we are looking forward to it and see it as a great partnership between all of us, the city and architects and CMAR. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Okay, we still have an executive session to go through. We're going to delay that to the very, very end, and we're going to go to staff and board reports. First one that we have is receive the library quarterly report. Mr. Velazquez.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me this evening. So here I am to give you the quarterly library report. During this last quarter, we were very appreciative and able to honor the volunteers that helped us at the library with our volunteer appreciation dinner. We have about 30 of our volunteers over there, primarily these were our teen volunteers, a few adult volunteers too that help us with some of our bigger projects. They do a great job for us over the course of the year, so we always appreciate, we're able to honor them. So we had a dinner for them over at the senior center a few weeks back. On staff updates, we sent a few of our staff, including myself, to the, by an annual library, Public Library Association conference this year was in Portland. This was a great conference for us to go to because it focused primarily on public libraries and all the issues that we deal with. So it was a great opportunity to see and benchmark how we're dealing with these issues and to get encouragement and support from fellow public librarians from across the country. We also were about to have our first in-service staff day over the last two years. We have about three new staff members who joined the team since the last one, so it's great to do some team building and training as well. So over this last quarter, we did continue our Ready Set Read program, which is a literacy program that we've really enjoyed working with the school district on. We also have the knitting group. This is an all-ages group that meets on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that continues to go on. So we did have the, on this past Saturday, the summer reading club kickoff party for our citizens here. We had nearly 700 attendees attend on that day. We had several wonderful events. The Friends of the Library were there. We had free food for the attendants and lots of games and things like that in order to kick it off. So it was a great event, we had a great time, the weather was perfect, so we really enjoyed that. So it's just some more images of all the happy faces who were there with us, so. And then we have summer reading club, which is going from June 4th through July 30th. This is a listing of our programs that we're going to have, weekly programs, daily programs, so everybody can participate in person and virtual. So this is always a great event to have, encourage the kids to read, attend programs. And at the end of the summer reading club, we do a drawing for Kindles. There's four Kindles we give away, those are provided by the Friends of the Library, and that's always a very popular way of encouraging the kids to participate.
Mr. Velazquez, I noted that you have read to dogs?
Yes, we do have a read to dogs program here, so this is for reluctant readers or children who have issues with reading. So what they do, they, we have companion dogs come in, and the children are able to sit and read to the dog, and that helps them learn comfort and the ability to communicate better.
So that's just a child bringing their pet and saying, "Sit down and read to..."
No, we have therapy dogs.
I mean, that happens too, but there's really an educational-
Yes.
-purpose to this, yeah.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, these are therapy dogs, and a lot of these kids-
That's the word, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a therapeutic purpose.
Right, right, and then we've done this over the last several years with different organizations that do similar, and it's a great event for those kids that have, you know, educational issues, or they might have social issues, and this is a way for them to be encouraged to interact and participate, so.
Very nice, thank you.
Yeah. And we are expanding our ESL program, that has been very popular with us, to have several more options for those classes that we're registering right now. That's always been very popular, and we're very grateful for the volunteers that help us with that class as well. Funding report.
Quick question on that one.
Yes.
I don't mean to ambush you, but it just occurred to me. And it happens as a result of our interface with the Dallas County Election Office, that the election signs are now required to be in three languages, English, Spanish, and Vietnamese.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, has there any thought been given to English as a second language to any of our population or adjacent communities where Vietnamese might be included in this?
The ESL is designed for anybody of any language group to come in and learn. They don't have to be Spanish speakers. So it's a generalized program, primarily our service population are Spanish speakers.
Right, right.
But the program itself can be tailored to any language group. When I worked in Dallas, I ran a literacy center for Dallas, and we had Urdu speakers, people who have various language groups who came in and were participating in the same program. So the origin language actually doesn't really matter at all, so.
Thank you.
Primarily, though, for us, it's been primarily Spanish speakers, but it would be easy to adjust that for other language groups.
Right, thank you.
We haven't had any requests yet for other languages, but we're always open to that too.
Thank you.
So we did, as I mentioned before, the Friends of the Library did fundraise for us and to give us some monies for our SRC program, our reading club, for those prizes, as well as a volunteer tracking software, which is a software suite we use for all of our teen volunteers specifically who have to do volunteer hours for school. So this is a way for them to track those hours and able to provide that to their schools for that, too. We did apply and receive TSLAC grant, this is from the Texas State Library Association, this is the Teen Technology Program grant. So we were able to receive two towers, which are basically charging stations for various devices that are going to be in the teen section. And also, we were able to acquire, we're building basically what is a mini movie studio for the teens to use, which include laptop and camera and green screen. We've had several students come in, have projects that involve doing, creating a video product for classes, and they don't have access to that stuff at home. So we were able to create these kits for them that they can utilize at the library. So, and that's what I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Velazquez.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, receive the Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report from Director Bart Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. My report tonight will cover the three months of February through April of 2022. I think I can safely say that in my time here in Duncanville, it's the busiest spring we've ever had here in our Parks and Recreation Department. So I'm really proud of our staff for all the efforts they put in for all our divisions. For park maintenance, our park staff assisted our public works department with the Household Hazardous Waste Event. Nearly 500 vehicles attended that event. It's always a fantastic accomplishment to help our folks out with their cleaning of their properties around town. As you're aware, we had a young citizen a number of months ago come to the council and talk about the need for, or the desire for bicycles on park trails. And our park board, or you, the council, put together a pilot program that we've implemented at Redbird Park that is now ongoing. We received a couple of comments, we're always looking for more feedback on this program, so we'd like to hear from you. Keep Duncanville Beautiful is always busy. They had their annual litter survey, and I'm happy to report that they reported less litter than last year, so it's always a good thing. And then our KDB also hosted four different community cleanup events at Waterview, Lakeside, the Lad property, and Riverway Right Way. At our recreation center, we have a number of ongoing programs. We had three new programs there with basketball and tumbling and arena sports. Probably the big highlight of this particular slide is we've had nine events in those three months. That's average of three events per month. It's pretty spectacular for a very small crew, so again, very proud of our staff for putting those together. Our big upcoming event, of course, is the 4th of July. The wristband distribution has begun, so as a reminder to everyone, we give out 12,000 wristbands to our citizens for 4th of July, and again, those can be picked up at the recreation center during their open hours. Our senior center- Our senior center continues to do our best to bring back our seniors who are still a little bit afraid of COVID. We, I will say, we're back at full operating hours, however our attendance is still lagging. And we're doing all we can to ensure them that it's safe. However, we're, of course, at the whim of the seniors and their desires to try to protect themselves from COVID. We do serve our drive-through meals. That continues today. That will continue into the near future, as far as I can see, because that is something that's desired by our citizens. A number of events there with the bingo, coffee with the mayor, walking the park, and of course, their health fair.
One comment I might make here, Mr. Stevenson, is that last bullet about live choirs. For anybody listening, whoever's left here, the Golden Airs give a concert on Wednesday. I forget which Wednesday of each month it is, but they are a choir of all seniors and that is directed by Sue Pointer. So if you're looking for something to do on a Wednesday morning, to come out and really encourage our seniors in that senior choir, it's a lovely thing to do. They really would enjoy to be able to sing to someone besides themselves. Mr. McNabbernet, you had comments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stevenson, and on the previous slide, it was talking about DAA, and it was talking about no more breakfast and that stuff. So I guess what's going on with that, or is there just funding?
That's a federal-funded program. They received additional monies through all the COVID efforts from the federal government. So with that, they implemented a breakfast program in addition to the lunch program that we already had in place. But that funding did run out, and so they ended that breakfast program. So again, that was all based upon the federal dollars that DAAA received, and then passed those on through to the cities. And so that's why you see the decrease of forty-five percent of meals served. It's all attributed to the lack of, or the discontinuation of the breakfast program.
Is that related to the, I guess, I know you mentioned that COVID was the only reason people weren't coming back. You think part of it is the fact that the breakfast isn't there? Are those numbers included in that decrease?
Really, the COVID comment really is related to people coming back to the building. We still have a lot of folks coming to use the meal service, the drive-through meal service. But getting them back in the building has been a challenge. We're averaging about ten people a day on an average day. We have been up as high as, you know, close to forty to fifty on the special event days. However, just on a normal day, we're just having a difficult time getting them back into the building. And it's just going to take some time, I think. So I just wanted to be upfront and honest with the council that, you know, we're not seeing the numbers pre-COVID that we had, where we had seventy to eighty members a day coming to the building. That's not the case. But it's not because any we're doing or lack of services that we're providing. It's really all attributed to COVID still.
Thank you.
So our bond projects, as you know, we completed the Lakeside project. It opened in the Easter weekend of 2021. Armstrong project, we are working with the two contractors to finalize their final bids. Working with our procurement manager at this time for that. We anticipate that coming to the council in the very, very near future. Then Harrington Park, again, as you're aware, we, council approved on April 15th the CMAR for that project, Dean Construction out of Cedar Hill. And we are working with them to finalize the final design and get that GMP we just talked about finalized in the next couple of months, so we can get that in front of you as well. So as you're aware, we're seeing the same issues as the fire department, so we're working through those issues.
Mr. Stevenson, you were with me for the first pitch of the Dunkin'ville Baseball League. And I committed publicly, because you told me to,
Yeah.
that the improvements for the ball field, with the new concession stand and the new pavilion and the new restrooms is going to be there by the time they open baseball next year.
Next spring. That's still our plan. We're going to be cutting close, but that is still our plan. The entire project may not be complete at that point, but we're going to try to get those concession stands and restrooms ready so they can play ball.
So you and I are on the rope.
So now the, the bridge may not be complete at that time, and maybe the pavilion, some of the other ancillary parts of that project, but we're going to do everything we can to get those done.
Thank you.
Yes. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Mr. McNabbernet?
It's not a question, it's a comment. But I mean, I've seen some very outstanding programs going on, and they've had excellent concerts and that kind of line. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the hard work that you guys are going in. And I also know that y'all aren't fully staffed, so it's even tougher, so.
We are one person short in our recreation department. However, our new staff member starts next Monday, so we're excited to bring that person on and know that they'll do great things with us, so.
And I want to give a shout out, City Manager, to Denola Garcia. That list of things going on at the Rec Center is enormous. And if you haven't had a chance to just go there, just see how our families are participating in these events that Mr. Garcia is putting on in the Recreation Center. It's really tremendous. And I hear such good comments from citizens that they're enjoying being able to go to those events that Mr. Garcia is planning, putting together.
Appreciate you for saying that.
Again, short staff, but he's, I don't know if it's right, he's remarkable.
Appreciate you for saying that. Yeah, I would agree with you. You know, that has been a strong effort of our department since coming out of COVID, is really to increase our programs and get back to a normal situation, a normal community, if you will. And so that's been our focus. We're always looking to grow our programs. So if anyone's listening, if you have a talent or a skill that you would like to share with our community, come talk to us. We'd like to start something with you at our Recreation Center, in our Senior Center.
Thank you. Any further comments from council, observations? Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you.
And now we're going to receive the quarterly report on the Field House. Mr. Brassfield?
Good evening.
When do you take a day off?
Not today.
I mean, I, looking at your schedule and driving past the Field House, and it is rarely a day it's not packed with cars, and looking at your schedule, what you've provided in your quarterly reports, it's immense. It's amazing. Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Aretha, Mayor, Council. I'm Craig Brassfield, the general manager at the Field House, speaking to the microphone. Thank you. We'll get right to it. First slide here is our revenue for the months of October, actually through, October through March. We're talking about the last three months, but as you can see, revenues are running just slightly above of the original budget. Same for the expenses, running right above our expectations. This slide illustrates exactly where we are. Revenues and expenses just above a million dollars. Renders of a five thousand dollars loss at the present. These numbers do include the five hundred and fifteen thousand payment from the Economic Development Department, the facility improvements, some, I'm extremely tired, y'all, so I can't keep my thoughts going, so I apologize.
Hey, we're here with you.
Yes, sir. The facility improvements, upgrades, and repairs that we've done over the last five or six months are illustrated here, that the, we've put money into our gym floors for the resurfacing. We've replaced all the heaters in the back of the house for our suites, fixed all of our TVs and upgraded the look in the lobby, made our food and beverage operation better by adding electrical upgrades so we can cook more food and prepare better. Then the dreaded emergency repairs of the Field House, air conditioners, had another one this quarter, twelve thousand dollars. But those are the contributing factors that we find ourselves where we are. Over sixty-three thousand dollars we've invested back into the building. And we're not through. Over the next month or two, we're getting our PA system up and running that was provided by the CDC Department. We're also adding shot clocks and three-point lines to the green gym, and we're tinning the windows in the lobby area to try to mitigate some of the heat that's coming off of the glass windows there.
I'm going to interrupt, excuse me, Mr. Brassfield. Question for City Manager. I was intrigued by the use on this particular slide or in the package, comparing the budget to munis. So is this going to be the new nomenclature that we will be seeing as a council and comparing budget to actually what's in the books, or what?
No, one of, based on part of them being an enterprise fund, we are slowly working to transition and get everybody there. They're a little bit different just because they had a separate way of handling, but Ms. Adina has been working closely with them. And so we'll get to the point where everything is reconciled and at the same, so we're getting there.
So we should get accustomed to seeing this particular comparison?
For now. Just because what was happening is, you'll see a budget report, and the numbers she'll present to you may be different from their report. And so we wanted to make sure you saw both numbers. But our goal is we should only have one set of numbers, and we're working to get to that point.
Right, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Brassfield. Continue, please.
One of the main things we've been working on diligently is to add contractual partners. Ariel Courts and Bridge Academy are two organizations of volleyball training and basketball training were there when I arrived six years ago. The next ones have all been added in the last six years, including club basketball training, a boxing and fitness operation, two dance instruction operations, fitness training with Zumba. We're adding, coming, very proud of what's fixing to happen over the next couple of months. In fact, I'm going to introduce some of those individuals are here to kind of talk about what they're doing. But all of these add up to just under two hundred thousand dollars in revenue, and you can see the categories that are impacted by renting out our space on a contractual basis, with suite rentals at eighty-five thousand dollars, sponsorships at forty-three, basketball and volleyball at fifty and twenty. And right here, I just wanted to show, this is kind of an illustration of where they are. The back of the house is where we fixed the air, excuse me, the heaters. And our boxing operation, and one of our basketball operation operates there, fitness and dance up front. And with that said, I would like to bring up our anchor tenant, Ms. Patricia Rosito. Her family runs and is running their program in our Blue Gym and renting space and doing a nice sponsor, sponsorship with us. And I just would like to ask her to talk about her vision and what she's doing there at the Field House.
I'm a little shorter than he is. Good evening. My name is Trish Rosito. I am, my son actually owns the organization, but I kind of help do well the organizing and coordinating with Craig. It's been a great partnership since we've been doing this. We run an organization. We've been doing it since 2018. We have about ten teams. Most of our boys are in the Dunkinville area, Cedar Hill, DeSoto, South Oak Cliff, so they're all in South Dallas. We do a lot of training, basketball. It is an AAU organization. We utilize two of the suites for weightlifting, and we have a recovery room. We also have two, we just purchased two shooting machines. So we try to utilize, during the daytime, we do training, and then we're also trying to incorporate some camps for the kids during the day. And yeah, we love the partnership with Craig. And so our boys love to have a home, and they love coming to Dunkinville, and they love having the blue side of the gym, calling it their own. And we also put two banners up, so they love seeing their faces up on the banners. So it's been a great, a great experience. So just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we love having you there, too.
Our next new vendor coming on is Cryo Plus. Ms. Slidel Tony.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm so tired, too. Mr. Mayor, council members. So my name is Adele Tony, and this is my daughter Skylar Thomas. And we have Cryo Plus, which is a new facility that's going to be in there, and we're really excited about it. Cryotherapy, if you're not familiar with it, it's a wellness and recovery. A lot of athletes use it. It's basically sub-zero temperatures, and it just, it creates a response to the body where it helps with swelling and inflammation and things like that and muscle recovery. And we're really excited about being able to be in Dunkinville Field House because there's a lot of athletic events. I have a lot of affiliations with, actually, I'm a coach at South Oak Cliff High School, so I'm working with them to actually be the vendor for the South Oak Cliff Golden Bears for cryotherapy. But just in addition to, I also coach AAU basketball, so we have a lot of affiliation with athletes around. So being in that facility is like, you know, ideal for us. And Craig, of course, has been great, and I don't think he takes any days off either, like you say.
So this requires special equipment that you're bringing into the suite?
Yeah. So we have a couple of things. We'll have a big whole-body chamber where you actually walk in, your head is out, and it, literally, you have gloves and socks and shoes on, but, and that's it. And it just, it, it's a maximum...
TMI, yeah.
I'm sorry. Right. So it's a maximum of three minutes, but it's, it creates a response to the body where it, you know, helps you, it energizes you. It's kind of like if you jump into a cold pool, right, and you get that chill feeling, and then you come out, you have a little energy and a little pep, and that's kind of what it does.
Wow, cool.
Yeah, so we'll also have spot cryo, cryo facials, compression, just a gamut of recovery and wellness things.
Sounds great.
Yeah, so I'm excited. We're excited about that. Thank you very much.
Certainly not last, and not least, we, one of the biggest problems we've had at the Field House is merchandise. And we had a pleasure of meeting Preston Johnson, Preston will come on, and his team. They're on the list here, but we're still in the midst of getting everything together. They haven't started yet, but we feel like we'll have things done this month and have merchandise back on our shelves featuring the Greatness Only apparel.
Good evening. My name is Lasagna Johnson, and my son actually founded the company. His name is Xavier Johnson. He was here earlier and had to jet off to work, but he's always had an entrepreneurial spirit from a young age. Sold candy, saved enough money to buy DJ equipment. He DJed for parties with his age group. And then he went off to college. He's a student athlete. And just one day in his dorm room, was sitting there reflecting on his experiences as a student athlete, and he says, "Stay on goal" is what came to mind. And he said, "Go, go. What can we do with go? Greatness only." So that's when Greatness Only was founded, established the business in 2018, and just really want people that have similar experiences as himself to stay on go and fulfill their greatness. So the motto and the name of the company is Greatness Only with several facets. And we'll have Xena, who is our project manager, kind of keeps us on task with everything that we have going on, to share more about that.
Thanks, Lasagna. So as you mentioned, my name is Xena Collins. I am a project manager for Greatness Only. But the one key thing I want to share with you guys about this company is not just about the apparel, it's not about the clothes. It's really about making an impact to the community and to the culture, right? I mean, the clothing is a great revenue generator for us, obviously, and we get to partner up with Field House and be able to produce that product. But we also want to impact the athletes. We want to impact all the younger generation coming through those doors with different sponsorship programs, different education programs, so that they can understand that being an athlete is great, but you can take that and go into higher callings and careers in your life, and that they shouldn't just settle for that, and to recognize that there is greatness within them in so many facets of their lives. So we're excited to partner up with Field House for that purpose and be able to share the vision, and especially having a younger person speak to the upcoming generation now. What more can be more influential than hearing from someone that's actually experienced it and is being successful? So I wanted to share that with you all, and I'll transfer it over to Preston.
Evening. Thanks for having us here, and Greg, appreciate, Craig, appreciate the invite. We're based off three important pillars. It's culture, community, and clothing. I think a lot of people try to identify apparel with just what we sell. That's not what we are. We are actually a life brand to impact and generalize and continue to move on in the right direction. And so my son's mindset behind that is, we have to make a difference in this narrative today. There's so much negativity that's floating around in the world, so what can we do to change that narrative? And behind our pillars, we thought it... thought it would be fitting to come to Duncanville. We live in Cedar Hill, but my son, we can go if it's a debate in, but I think it's important because I think with Craig and his team, and actually in Duncanville, and we're excited to sign that agreement, and hopefully it'll be a long term. So, with your permission, I'll be able to pass some wristbands out to the council up there, would be okay?
All right, sure.
Are you working on that?
So, Mr. Brassfield, they're going to occupy the space as you enter the double doors that, where the apparel is-
The corner, right corner in the store. It's 150 square foot area right there with slatboard and mannequins and display boxes that hopefully real soon, we'll have a deal that we can start having some Field House apparel that they will be providing, as well as Greatness Only's apparel.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Moving right along, summer camp. Summer camp started yesterday.
Time out, time out.
Time, time out, time out.
Mr. Coons, sorry about that. You're on a roll.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Could you go back to one, two slides? Yes, sir. Right there, the prep school at the very last point there.
About six or eight months ago, we kind of got a deal going, and I think they were trying to move their operation or have a separate campus location in Duncanville. They're in Fort Worth. And for whatever reason, they took a step back. They're paying their sponsorship portion of their agreement and their schedule to start school after the summer break and start in September, versus trying to start right around the spring break time, when they first, we got together and put a deal together.
Okay. So, is that, so is that going to happen, or you said that?
Well, it's happening now.
It is happening, okay. Can you provide any more information about the-
Sir?
Can you provide any more information about the prep school itself?
Well, at this time, or you mean, provide you with more?
Just an overview right now?
Well, it'll be sixth to 12th graders. They're teaching class. It'll be a morning deal with kind of a recess in one of our gyms. We were perfect what they're trying to do, because a lot of places don't have classroom and gymnasium all in one, so I think that was attractive. And they've got sponsorship right now, a couple of signs in the gyms, and promoting their likeness. You can go to their website. Our information is on their website for registrations to get going. And other than that, we're just excited to get in a position where they can come and do what we plan to do.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Summer camp started yesterday, and we've got over 300 kids registered. Our goal is 500. We had 250 kids in camp today, over 250 in camp today, and it's pretty crazy. And not only did we have summer camp going on, we had an ABA or AAB basketball camp going on on one side and summer camp on the other. So, all summer long, we will be doing summer camp and basketball camps, one side versus the other. Let's see here. These are our reservations through April. We're a little bit behind with our, with our meeting. We usually do this earlier, but we've already had these events. Gasso's always our biggest event. Block Sport Volleyball Tournament, the one's in blue. Gasso, again, are our major events for the month of April. Get over to May, we've got, we just had the grappling, Jiu-Jitsu tournament from American Grappling, a national combine, and Hype Sports Youth Tournament were the highlights of May. We're in June now, just this past weekend, we did the Urban Camp, or tournament. Showtime next week, and then a Gasso-sponsored event with the Texas Coaches Association that will be doing a huge tournament. And then the Dallas Mavericks kind of end the month out with a, with a basketball camp on our, on our blue side in the Blue Gym. All of those tally up to about 13 basketball tournaments, six camps, three leagues. As you can see, basketball dominates the program. One Jiu-Jitsu tournament, one volleyball tournament, one volleyball camp, and several community events. And that was the month of April, May, and June. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brassfield. Questions, comments from City Council? Seeing none. Thank you, sir, and get some sleep. Take a day off somewhere. Take a day off in there somewhere. And the best to your crew as well, all that you do. Okay, we still have executive session to do. So, City Secretary, we're going to mark the recessing of City Council at 10:13.
We're agreeing to screw them.
Okay, so, we are, we are back in executive session at, I'm sorry, we are in, we're back in open session at 11:05, and we are concluding our-
Action, action.
No, action should be taken as a result of executive session, and we are adjourning at 11:06.